We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please draw the roll?
Ms. Hurst?
Absent.
Attorney Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Naylor?
Present.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mayor Sarno?
Present. Can we all please rise for a moment of silence to the pleasure of the Legion? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation of God. Thank you. And to all the fathers out there from each and every one of us, Happy Father's Day. And we're also joined by our student representative, recent graduate of the arts school, Benny in the Jets himself, Benny Fobon. Benny, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Benny.
And I did receive the gift. I really appreciate it.
Aww.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome, Benny.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
This has been a great speech. We're unbelievable. Great speech.
Thank you. I worked hard on that speech.
It's tough.
They're a natural. It must have been all that wisdom you obtained from the school committee.
Nah.
We'll go to approval of the minutes, approve the minutes of the March 29th, 2020 public hearing and the March 30th, 2020 regular session and the May 7th, 2020 special meeting. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second.
Second.
Second. Always in favor, stay out.
Aye.
You need a roll call.
You need a roll call.
My apologies, sir. The new normalcy we're in. Madam Clerk, I apologize. Could you please call the roll?
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor? Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. That's right. Everything is a roll call now. Voting items. A to approve awarding a city diploma for Devin Lopez. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, there's an informational memorandum in your packet on this. Devin completed all of our systemic requirements, all the course requirements, plus passed the MCAS, all the appropriate MCAS when he has the CD. So I'm recommending approval of a diploma for Devin.
Thank you. Anything else you can add?
You know, Dr. Yolanda Johnson reviews all of the files for student addition district placements to make sure they have not only the course requirements, but also the MCAS requirements. So with all of these, she's reviewed, everyone is making this recommendation. So I recommend approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
By Ms. Gresham, roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations, Devin Lopez. These two award a city of Springfield diploma to Sierra White, Superintendent Warwick?
Sierra has completed all the requirements and passed the MCAS. I'm recommending approval. There's a memorandum in your packet.
So moved.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Sierra White. C is awarding a city of Springfield diploma to Corbin Tatro, Superintendent Warwick?
And recommending approval. There's an informational circular in your packet.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is her second.
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 By Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Corbin Tatro. D is to approve awarding a city of Springfield diploma to Devin Olivas Cruz. If I pronounced the name wrong, I apologize. Olivas, yes, Olivas Cruz. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, again, there's a circular in your packet. Recommending approval.
And this is for a diploma. Again, Devin Olivas Cruz. I apologize.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Devin Olivas.
Mr. Mayor, there's the background noise. I don't know if anybody else can hear it. I hear background noise. I don't know if we should mute ourselves until we get ready to speak. I'm not sure.
I know we're not getting any here, so I don't know if you could do that. It will give you a signal if you're muted.
The only one who's not muted right now is Peter.
Okay.
And Maria.
And me.
I don't hear any background.
Right now, it's clear. Are you clear, Barbara?
Clear now.
Okay.
But when we are speaking, we can proceed and see what happens.
A to approve awarding a city of Springfield diploma to Destiny Moltica, Superintendent Warwick?
Again, this is a recommendation for a diploma. There's a memorandum in the packet on it. I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. A motion, please.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Peter. Unmute yourself.
He's not muted.
Peter? Attorney Murphy? Okay, we'll move on to next, please.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Devin Olivas.
Mr. Mayor, there's the background noise. I don't know if anybody else can hear it. I hear background noise. I don't know if we should mute ourselves until we get ready to speak. I'm not sure.
I know we're not getting any here, so I don't know if you could do that. It will give you a signal if you're muted.
The only one who's not muted right now is Peter.
Okay.
And Maria.
And me.
I don't hear any background.
Right now, it's clear. Are you clear, Barbara?
Clear now.
Okay.
But when we are speaking, we can proceed and see what happens.
A to approve awarding a city of Springfield diploma to Destiny Moltica, Superintendent Warwick?
Again, this is a recommendation for a diploma. There's a memorandum in the packet on it. I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. A motion, please.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Rebecca Hoffman. J is to approve awarding a city of Springfield certificate of attainment to Tyrell Dixon Hughes, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Again, I'm recommending approval on this. This student qualified, completed all our coursework, but didn't pass the MCAS/CD recommendation. Will have other opportunities to do that at that time, could earn a diploma. But at this juncture, he's earned a certificate of attainment, so I'm recommending approval. There's a circular in your packet.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Tyrell Dixon Hughes. H is to approve awarding a city of Springfield certificate of attainment to Melvin Mania, Superintendent Warwick?
Again, there's a memorandum in your packet on it. Again, this is for a certificate of attainment. Recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Is there a motion on the floor, please?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Melvin Mania. Boy, that'd be a good tagline there. Melvin Mania. I is to approve awarding a city of Springfield certificate of attainment to Rebecca Hoffman, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, there's a memorandum in your packet on this. Again, this is for a certificate of attainment, and I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is second, please.
Second.
By Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm having a little problem with my phone, guys, so please just do what you need to do. I don't want to hold you up, but I'm, you know.
Ms. Naylor?
I'm here now.
Glad, Murph, then. We'll do it that way. How's that?
Ms. Naylor was yes. Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations to Rebecca Hoffman. J is to approve the 2020-2021 school committee meeting schedule, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, again, we developed the schedule, you know, in conjunction with the light there. Take it into account, given what's going on in the city. We put a meeting before school opened because the truth is, no one knows right now what we're going to be facing in the fall for sure, so we can have a working session to talk about school reopening and how we're going to handle all of that. The rest of the calendar is very, very similar to last year, so I don't know if Chris, if you want to...
Any questions, Collins?
I knew we needed an extra one during mid-August. At some point, we may have to amend the calendar. We may want to have other working sessions as things progress and we have more things to deal with. So we always have enough flexibility where we could change something to an actual working session, because in working sessions, we get a chance to have the whole committee rather than just a subcommittee work on anything. So I would remain flexible. I think for anybody who at some point during the year, if we want to switch a meeting over from a regular meeting to a working session, that I think we ought to do that so that we're all keep ourselves up to date and informed.
In most years, we've added some working sessions to the calendar as well, so.
So... May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead. Was it Ms. Gresham?
Yeah, I had a question. Oh, go ahead.
Ms. Gresham, then I'm going to move forward. I'm sorry.
You probably the same question. Go ahead, Ms. Naylor.
Ms. Hurst? And then I, but I have a question, too.
Oh, okay. I know. I can't, I can't, I can't pull it up right at this moment, but what is the date for the August meeting?
August 20th. Thursday, August 20th.
And so, Vice Chair, is it possible to do something earlier? I'm just thinking that if this is for us to talk about preparing to return to school, then it might be helpful to be able to have that discussion a little bit earlier because that's not a lot of time for folks to plan if we're slated to return on the 28th, I think. I mean, I know that the superintendent and his team are going to be communicating, but it seems pretty late.
I'm, I'm fine with adding one. Let me get my calendar out and let's see.
And that, and we can do the offline setting, the date?
Certainly, we can add one. Yeah. Why don't we add the 13th right now so we have both the 13th and the 20th? If we go any earlier, I don't think you're going to have any information. And then if we, we can adjust as necessary. But why don't we add to that calendar, Patty, if you'd make note, if somebody makes a motion, that we add the 13th as a working session as well.
Okay, you do the 13th, 20th?
Yes.
So I would make that motion. I'd make the motion that if possible, that we add August 13th, 2020, as an additional school committee.
As a working session?
Working session.
Okay. And is that, is that 6:00 PM, Ms. Hurst?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. A second?
Motion, but made by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote, I believe, roll call vote is required, so that means the August 13th, 2020, including August 20th, 2020, which is already on there. So, motion by Ms. Hurst, seconded by Ms. Gresham. Any discussion at all?
I have a question. And Ms. Gresham, I know you had a question as well. Was it similar or to Denise, or did you?
No, you can go, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to know if along with waiting until August to be a part of the session, to be able to discuss, if we could be notified as much in advance as possible when anything is going to be released to the media? And I know that you all have done a better job, so I don't want to say that. I felt that I've been a lot more informed pretty quickly of a lot of changes, but I would just, it would be helpful if the commissioner comes out with anything drastically before that timeframe and we're able to be notified before any of the public is made aware, just because we get a lot of phone calls. And I don't want to be misinformed or wait, telling people I have to then find out and then come back to them with the response.
So noted.
Perhaps, Laconia, and perhaps, Barbara, as things start to come forward, perhaps we could, you could hold a subcommittee meeting, a student parent concern, subcommittee meeting, which we are all invited to even though we don't all necessarily participate, but we would all see that information that's going to be discussed. So maybe that's an avenue to make sure that we can stay informed, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor.
Yeah.
Are you all set, Ms. Naylor?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Okay. We'll get a copy of the new year's schedule, right? The meetings nailed out to us?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
It'll be revised from the one that you have in your package right now, as the new one.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
What is, the community's been asking what's going to happen coming the new school year. So any reports or anything from the Department of Second Education? What are the plans? And if there's any, could we get the information?
Sure. I actually have it as an agenda item to let you know what I know right now.
Okay.
But it's all speculative, so I have a major informational item on it for you later in the agenda, so depends if you want me to do it now or...
No, no, I'll wait. I'll wait.
But again, understand it's purely speculative. The commissioner hasn't put out anything firmly. They're going to get us some more clarification over the summer and then probably submit some options for us, and we'll have to get a plan approved by Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, based on their guidance. So he has a statewide team working on this. He has epidemiologists on it, the Mass Department of Health, educators. He has the teachers' unions representing the teachers' group, parent advocacy groups. So there's a large team working at this at the state level, and as they come out with guidance, we'll have to formulate that into, into our plan. You know, we'll be following their suggestions, obviously. But I'll go into that in more detail for you. It's a great question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, here we go. There was a motion on the floor by Ms. Hurst. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah. Okay, second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
I think we lost, he's on the phone. We lost him again.
Ms. Gresham? I'm sorry, Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes.
I'm going to err on the caution that that was actually an amendment, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we now approve the amended.
Yes. So now for the overall, the motion was approved. Now for the overall vote, again, this is to approve, for the record, the 2020-2021 school committee meeting schedule as amended. Motion by Vice Chair Collins. Is there a second? Is there a second, please?
I'll second. Second, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required again.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Ms. Perez? Yes, I think it's...
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes. More than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. K is to approve the Springfield Public Schools School Committee COVID-19 State Funding Resolution, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, you know, looking at this resolution, obviously, right now, as our budget is in a state of flux, obviously, we're advocating for more funding. Denise, this came from MASC. I thought maybe you'd want to add more to that.
Ms. Hurst?
Sure. So I think that, not I think, I should say, my understanding is that this resolution was developed by Peter Demling, I believe his name is, out of the Amherst Regional School Committee, and then was adopted by the MASC, and there's been several school committees throughout the Commonwealth that have adopted it. I think that a lot of districts, like the superintendent just mentioned, have budgets that are in flux, are really concerned about how they're going to be able to pay for some of the costs that come along with us returning to schools, such as PPE, busing, or I know that that's on the city side, but a variety of different costs that have, you know, are going to come down on the local school districts and really make it difficult to ensure that we're not necessarily making cuts in other places.
You know, it's so important at this time, we're trying to put a plan together, and of course, we don't even have a budget with our state funding, which is 90% of our budget in place. So the sooner we get that, the better, and obviously, it has to be comprehensive enough to cover the kind of plans the state is suggesting we make. So it's a great resolution. Thank you, and I fully support it.
Absolutely. I think that the, you know, to the superintendent's point, Mr. Mayor and others, is that the commissioner, of course, is going to do his very best to provide a plan for all of the districts in the Commonwealth, but we know that others have more flexibility with their, more flexibility with their budgets, and if there is a prescriptive way that we have to open, there could be, really be some deep unfunded mandates that affect different districts differently.
Well, I know we had been assisting in our cabinet heads meeting from the city side on some study stuff for Superintendent Warwick, our school side with Tim Sheehan, My Echo Dev and CBBG, and the big cost we talked about is gonna be the PPEs.
Right.
PPEs, because the burn rate is gonna be tremendous. I see the burn rate that they go through already with the police and fire. So that's gonna be a strong amount of money.
And I was very happy to hear you use the terminology, Mrs. Hurst, unfunded mandate, and I think we should all stick with that terminology. If we're told we have to do something that we don't normally anticipate on our budget, we should have a common language around it, so it's an unfunded mandate, because there is actually statutes that say they cannot pass unfunded mandates.
Right, right. Absolutely, I mean, I think that, you know, this is nothing that anyone could have ever anticipated or planned for, and so to pass the burn-in on, pass the burn-in on to districts that, you know, are already trying to do more with less is truly, it truly speaks to that definition.
Any other questions or comments, and thank you for your work on this, Ms. Hurst. Any questions? Motion we approve. Motion by Vice Chair Collins is a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more sufficient votes, the matter passed. Thank you very much. L is to approve the Springfield Public Schools School Committee anti-racism resolution. Superintendent Warwick?
There's another strong resolution from MASC that Denise has been part of, so I thought Denise could take the heat on explaining it.
Ms. Hurst?
Sure, so this, like the superintendent said, is another resolution that was developed out of the MASC. As you all know, I sit on the MASC board. Actually, Latonia now also has the seat. Congratulations to her as Secretary Treasurer of the Minority Caucus. So this was put together by myself and some of the other members from the executive board in response to all that has been occurring across the country and here in our own state of Massachusetts to really speak to the racial injustices. Specifically, how do we ensure that as a school committee that has responsibility to educate our youth, our future, and ensure that it's a safe environment for not only our students, but our teaching staff and faculty? And so, I know, Mayor, and I am actually extremely appreciative that you've declared racism a public crisis, and so this is a, this is a resolution that speaks to what are some of the things that we can do? What are some of, what is the teeth behind us ensuring that we are making real changes to our systems and our institutions that perpetuate racism? And whether it's done overtly, covertly, purposely, or not, you know, what are some of the things that we can start to do to think about how we change things for the better?
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to add to that, Mr. Mayor. I'm really appreciative, and as Denise said, I am now the Secretary Treasurer of the Minority Caucus, and it was something that we, our chair, actually, Mildred brought it to the attention, to have a statement come from the MASC, and I was really happy when the board got together and said, "Not only will we have a statement, but we really want to make it known that we are declaring almost war, quote unquote, in a way against, in a way of saying against racism and institutionalized racism." So I'm really grateful for that opportunity to be able to partner with school committees across the Commonwealth, and several school committees have already unanimously voted and accepted this resolution. So I am hopeful that we will do the same, because it is something that really speaks volumes about our perspective and our appreciation for people of all shapes, sizes, cultures, and backgrounds and colors, you know? And it's very important that we appreciate and value one another, but also put that statement into action by starting to do more actionable, make more actionable steps towards the goal of really equity and equality.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that we are certainly living in a moment in history unlike anything that any of us have ever seen. We have finally gotten the majority of the general population of our country focused on an issue that has long been there. And this is a unique moment that, I mean, we'll be talking about to our my children, and they're old enough to be talking about it to theirs, but it's a unique moment, it really is. Shades, praises of the 60s and the anti-war, where we're very, but this is even more momentous and really unique. I'm glad we're doing this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I wanna say thank you to Mrs. Hurst and Ms. Naylor for representing us as we move forward and keeping us posted. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez?
Yeah, for question in terms of this resolution. Once the, if the resolution is passed, are we putting a plan in place? I don't want just the resolution to pass as a resolution, and we don't have a plan in place without come solutions. And that is my question at this point.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, Maria, I think that's an amazing question. Thank you so much. And I know that I was able, and was able to have a conversation with our vice chair, and the superintendent, actually. And I was hoping, and I know, Chris, I don't, the agenda hasn't been set for the August meeting, but I did ask Chris, you know, where can we have this dialogue? How can we begin to have these conversations with each other as a governing board? And sort of start to figure out steps? And this is in no way to say that we aren't already doing good things as a district. I think that we are, but how do we build on those? And how do we begin to look at things from a very different lens? So I do think that that's a great question, and I would just ask, Mr., well, of course, Mr. Collins, if at some point that could be an agenda item for our working session?
I was anticipating that it would be an agenda item on one of those two. I think the public needs to see us talk about it. And they don't tend to go to subcommittee meetings, and we all need to be part of this discussion, and the public needs to see that we are talking about it. So it was gonna be a portion, if not, it might be a portion of both of them, but it certainly, with the 13th and the 20th, that will be in there.
Okay, great.
It's probably the new office that I'm creating under the Health and Human Services, Commissioner Helen Carlton-Harris on race equity. This is something, again, that charged with a meeting with community groups, faith-based groups, our businesses, to move exactly on this issue and come back to me with recommendations and constructive avenues, how we can continue to knock down these challenges across the board. Helen and I started these discussions a while ago, because we started to see a lot of inequities pertaining to the COVID-19 coronavirus with our minority community. So with the tragedy that occurred with Mr. George Floyd, that was one of the three things I moved on and announced the other day, so as this office evolves, obviously, education, schools play a big part, and I know we can work together jointly on that, but there is a, there is a change, and I think what's happened is that, I know in some of my meetings, one statement that, and I used it in the statement, that to walk in someone else's shoes, and you might not think it would occur with the individuals that we deal with there, and to hear some of the stories on it, you don't think it, because when you're dealing with the individuals, whether black, senior leadership, cabinet heads, department heads down, you say, "Well, that's, they're treated, you know, you don't treat us that way," but these are the things that occur. So the more conversation, the more constructive conversation, and in a mutually respectful way, is gonna be advantageous in dealing with education, housing, economic development, bettering police relations. It goes on and on and on, and I think a big thing that we're doing, I know Barbara, it's tough with, you know, the head starts for the world and everything now. Now, we worked so hard as a school committee and on the city side to get hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of more slots for pre-K and after, and now this sets us back a little bit, defeat COVID-19 coronavirus, because what you were saying, everything we're gonna do now, limited class size.
Yeah.
But we'll get through, but I think it's fantastic, and any other comments at all, questions?
Just that these discussions will actually fill out the definition of terms that are used quite often, that some people, it turns people off, because they don't understand the true definition of a particular term, and as we get a chance to discuss it in a public forum, that everything flashed there for a second, I think it gets to give a more robust definition to those terms. And that's a good thing.
Absolutely, I think that, I think that when I just heard what the mayor had to say, really, you know, one of the things that just came to my, to my, to my thought process, or came to me, and Mayor, you know, I know that you might already have sort of your structure in place, but I do think that it's important that when we do have these conversations, that we don't have them in silos, right? That we don't go off as a school district or as a school committee, but that it is a conver, that, yes, I know that we have to have ours, but your task force that you're forming, I think it would be great if we could have representation on that, because it's gotta be embedded into the fabric of the city, right? So it's not just like, okay, that's happening in City Hall, but, you know, this is also happening in the school district, but that everybody knows, like, this is how our city is going to practice, this is what we're going to do every day as good citizens, you know, of our city.
Synergy, and that's what I'm working on, putting on the foundation of that, and again, this is, I mentioned some, just off the top of my head, some of the groups that we reach out, but it has to be in synergy, and I've always said on the school side, being mayor, it's two hats for me. Not only educational thing, but this is our farm system for workforce development and economic development, so, you know, there'll be, it'll be, it'll be synergy. This is, it's brand new, so, but we wanna do it. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and that's why I asked, if we are gonna pass this resolution to have those conversations from the schools' perspective, because then we could merge those synergies together. Probably there'll be some gaps when it comes to the city council with the school committee, and we could influx both of those outcomes together, and also just verify if we are, it's a mode of verifying if we are on the right track.
Thank you. Thank you all. Any other questions or comments? The start of a, well, we've always had these conversations anyways in a proactive way, but the start of a good thing is moving forward.
I move we approve the resolution.
If there's only questions or comments, motion by Vice Chair Collins is a second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more sufficient vote, the matter passed. Thank you. And is to approve a letter of commendation to Valerie Franco. Matter of fact, I sent a letter to both her and her partner in the peaceful protest that was held, and I think this is great that we're doing something officially from the school committee. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, proud of, proud of our kids stepping forward in a few rallies and taking a lead in peaceful protests and really getting involved in the community. Latonia had an idea on this, so I'd like to turn it over to Latonia to add on here.
Absolutely. So Valerie Franco, who we're gonna be talking about and sending a letter out to, has been phenomenal in the community, not just with her work around the rallies, but even with her volunteering in organizations like Parent Villages, and still being a college student and everything, and she was in our ROTC at Central. And so we used to see her periodically come for a speak-out, and when I met her outside of school, I immediately remembered her face, and I told her, you know, as another Central Eagle, you know, I totally appreciate it, not just what she's doing as an Eagle, but also as a student who graduated from the Springfield Public Schools, and I think so many times you look in the newspaper and you see all the highlights of kids who have made bad choices, but we don't often get a chance to see the faces of those who are doing phenomenal work in the community. And it was one of the largest, if not the largest rallies we've had in the city, led by young people, and it was peaceful. And so I just thought, you know, this is something that we have to absolutely speak to and remind folks that good things do come out of Springfield, good things do come out of Springfield Public Schools.
It's a pleasure seeing her and her co-partner in that, at Central High, we marched down there, but it was quite a movement, quite a movement. So I think it's great. Any questions or, any other questions?
Just a comment. Patty, you're there, I don't, oh, she's there. Oh, okay, you keep moving around on me. This is, I think this is important enough, could you have, could you have John Bedline once this passes? Bring it, so there's actual signatures, and can we put it in some type of a nice frame?
Yes, absolutely. And Vice Chair, if I may say as well, I believe Valerie is listening, I sent her the link so that she could tune in, and I took, you know, we wanted to acknowledge her, and I wanted her to be able to hear it firsthand, not just by somebody else, so, hi Valerie, we love you and what you're doing.
We're proud of you. Thank you, Valerie, we're very proud of you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, here, is there a motion for, please?
So.
Motion by everybody. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Collins. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more sufficient votes, the matter passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, and she said, "Thank you," she sent me a text and said, "Thank you so much," she so appreciates it.
Thank you, Latonia.
That's great.
And is to approve expenditure of a quarter of a million dollars from the NFL Foundation, local initiatives supporting the corporation LISC Sports and Recreation for the FY20 NFL Foundation Grassroots Fund. This is very helpful, Superintendent's going to explain, as a move to put another field at the Duggan Plateau area, which will be the Ted Plum Field, and I'm working with TJ Plant, my CFO, on the city side, and Pat Sullivan, as we continue to obtain monies to get this done. Superintendent Warwick?
No, I'm just so thrilled about this, since we built Putnam Vocational Technical High School, we lost a Ted Plum field at Putnam, and our central field's been overused with all of our inter-scholastic programs, as well as all the youth programs. So we needed this second field, we've been talking about it, working on it, coming up with a way. I think Duggan's a perfect location, we have the land, you know, it's right towards the middle of the city again, very, very helpful for us and a real need, so we applied for this grant on our side with the mayor's support, and we're looking for many other grants. The mayor's team is helping us secure. But the biggest piece of this, too, is the mayor's support, because he's talking about bonding for the rest of it, because the grants aren't gonna cover everything, but this is a, I believe it's a pre-plus million-dollar project, just the field trip alone is a million dollars, or was back at Central. But a great piece for us in honor of Ted Plum. The original Ted Plum was a coach at actual Trade High School. On a personal level, it's kinda nice, because my dad played for him when he went to Trade High School. He was a great football coach, so I think it's a great thing for the city, and again, I think we need it on the youth sports side. So Pat Sullivan's been big on the park piece of this. So it's a real entire-city venture to get this field online, and like I said, it's a great need. So I'm just so appreciative of the mayor's team, all their support they've given us, but this is gonna be a real coup for us as we pull this forward. It was funny, when the call came in, and I did report the call to you back several months ago, it was Andre Tippett, and he said,
Great linebacker.
Yeah, great linebacker of the Patriots, and he said, "You probably don't remember me," because he played like back in the 70s and 80s. I said, "Oh, I remember you," Hall of Famer, incredible, but a great guy. But he was so happy to be part of the project, and what a great need we're fulfilling for the community and the school system. So I'm just very excited about this project. And with it, we're also gonna take a look at the ground, so the parking lot at Duggan's been a problem for years, we need major bonding for that, that's built into that, we've heard you, Barbara.
Underground water, Barbara.
It's a major, major project, Pat looked into it, and we tried to patch it, but that requires, it's, we have a water problem there, requires a lot of work, yeah. Yeah, so it's all part of the project, the upgrades, the parking lot, the lighting, the entire facility, but really excited about this, and really grateful for the city collaboration.
We're gonna, this'll be with stands and lighting. Now, Central, we were able to pull off, was about $2 million, and we were able to get a lot, the very philanthropic business community and diplomatically twisting arms to donate or in kind. This, as Superintendent indicated, possibly could be, with everything we do, let's, three?
Three and a half.
Three, it's gonna be north, north of three, four, so we're gonna put as much money as we can, get as much money as we can, but it really, we need to get it done. And Gary Brown, the legendary sports reporter for the Republican, will appreciate, because he's just, Eric, don't forget Ted Plum Field, I just know, we're gonna, we'll get it done, and so we're on our way, we have an amount of money, but it's, a city our size deserves, needs to have two state-of-the-art type fields, so we'll move forward.
So this is just to accept the grant, so it's been through the subcommittee, I don't know if,
It's, it got unanimous support, and I think it's an absolutely wonderful use of Shea's Dump.
Shea's Dump, so.
The property was one of the dump called Shea's Dump, and with a white picket fence all the way around it.
Yeah, on top of Shea's Dump, so that's what it originally was, and when Eddie Shea was the principal there, we made a lot of jokes about that, so.
Is there any questions or comments on this?
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say thank you, because parents have been calling and teachers have been calling about that parking lot, so it's nice to know that that'll be part of the project. Do we know when this will start?
Well, we're hopeful, once we get to a certain amount of money, that we can start some of the work. I know on the parking lot, that's something that we wanna move on quicker.
It's gonna require a major bonding, so we built it into this project, because the project's gonna require a major bonding, but I've worked with Pat Sullivan on it, and the more we look at it, the more significant that job is, so. Where Pat is also seeking at least two more major grants, he's working on right now to try to help the mayor get that baseline funding in, so he's working on those as we speak, and it's a real act of progress.
And some I'll have to match. Hey, Barb, as you know, I get those phone calls, too, from over there.
I'm sure, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised if they don't have to raise that, because that's all groundwater issue, too.
No question.
Because if you look to the, looking at Duggan to the right, there's a bog there, a leather leaf bog, so you've got a high-water table.
There's leather leaf, there's leather leaf, yeah.
Yeah, no, Pat's looked into it, because we've been trying to fix that, but it's like, it's a major bonding project, it's not a small project because of the water. And you're right, you've gotta do major renovations just to do that. But Pat is working on, we're gonna hopefully be announcing some other grants from the Park Department, and it's a real collaboration, and the mayor's been supportive since, again, we've been talking about this since Putnam went up and we had to take away Ted Plum Field, so the mayor's been very supportive, so.
We'll get it done. Speaking of that, Barb, and I know Maria's on, too, gave you both a shout-out today, we're doing the, well, the Berry Homer, and right with, which is moving forward, we had to do a public meeting, another Zoom, man. I felt, I'm still trying to get used to the Zoom stuff here, but
I know.
For you and both your leaderships on the, because with Fontaine Brothers, your neighborhood, your neighborhood meetings, what Maria did down the north end, and you in the, in the square area there, they're gonna continue that, just a side note.
Yeah, we have some good news on that, the Berry project that I'm gonna share with you as part of the agenda later.
All right, good.
And I do have to tell you, Mayor, that I think Barbara has surpassed you in becoming, adapting to Zoom.
No, right?
Any other questions or comments on the grant?
So, move that we approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, second, please.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
I think we lost him again.
Okay. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more sufficient votes, the matter passed. Always to prove a $5,000 donation from American Outdoor Brands that's been distributed to the food service program. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Our food service program has got national attention, and we continue to get rave reviews on the food service program, especially in light of what we've done since school closed. Since school closed on March 12th,
Over 1.29.
One point, one- One point, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand meals as of tomorrow will be, uh, distributed from our schools. And again, we're going to continue during the summer, but it's an incredible accomplishment. And as these grants come in, entities are actually reaching out to us and giving us grants. And it's a real tribute to Pat Roach and his team, uh, working with Sedex O that have been a great corporate citizen and partner. And this grant is in recognition of that, the Culinary Center and everything else. Uh, came through our subcommittee. I'm recommending we accept the grant.
And, and Pat mentioned in the subcommittee that this was a cold call. They called on their own and said, we'd like to donate five thousand dollars because of the work that they were seeing in the press, um, that was going on. So this, it's nice to see the community step up. It really is.
Yep.
And any questions or comments on the site? Is the motion on the floor, please?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, your second please. Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call was required. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Miss Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, with the Ed Collins, the Vice Chair of the Gavel nineteen fifty. Yes, Justice for Chicago, Madam Pass. Thank you very much. P is to approve the revisions to the laptop, uh, take home policy and, uh, which has been a tribute to everybody here. Seventeen thousand laptops well ahead of other districts. Plus we put some city money into it to do it. And Superintendent's going to, we're going to continue it. Superintendent Ward?
Yeah, you know, this is a bit of positive development with a, with a COVID crisis. We had done a lot with laptops, a lot with technology. Thank God. Because, uh, when we closed, uh, my colleague Maureen Beniendi was telling me in Worcester, they didn't have any laptops. They're still doing work packets out with their lunch program. So we, you know, we're in a different spot than most other people. And I think the school committee for, you know, five years ago, when we made this decision to go with one to one laptops, in spite of real tough budget times, we made some sacrifices and actually invested in laptops, but also invested in a lot of professional development for our staff in using that technology. And it was so important. At that time, when we put the, the program in place, we were worried about the loss of laptops. And we had an insurance policy as part of that. It was roughly about twenty dollars a student because we'd have no way to replace, we didn't have the funding to replace, uh, lost or stolen or, you know, damaged laptops. Now, since we've had this program in place for many years, we're taking our, after four years of use, we're taking some laptops offline and there's useful life left in those laptops. So our proposal would be for any students who loses damages or anything else with a laptop, we'd give them a loaner of one of the used laptops rather than just trying to purchase a new laptop. Therefore, we wouldn't need this insurance cost for the families, which has been a barrier towards everyone having the laptop and everyone having it to take home. And now that we've gone full take home, we were only in seven schools. It's clear we just don't want to go back. One piece of this is that, another piece we're going to change instead of the laptop assigned from the school and students, students using at the school, we're going to assign them to each student and they, you know, they get their laptop and have it for four years. We think that students will like that very much. And even if they change school, they'll just take their laptop to their new school. We also think that they'll take better care of the laptop because they're not just sharing it with other people. But Paul's going to go through the details of the policy change. But I think it's time now that we have the excess laptops to get rid of the insurance and move forward with this one to one take home. And again, the students being assigned a laptop and having it for the four years. So Paul, if you could take it away.
What stats? He's right there. Yeah, he's just standing. Sorry, just getting ready to share my screen.
Thank you. All yours, stats.
Sorry about that. Yeah. So, um, I'm going to give you a real quick, kind of, and the superintendent said it really well. So I'm just going to breeze through this quickly. Um, so we did start in 2016, 17, when the take home policy was first adopted that we're proposing to revise this evening. Um, we've been expanding over the years. Then last year, so the last full year prior to this school year, we had about forty eight hundred laptops going home, collected about ninety six hundred dollars through, or ninety six thousand dollars, I should say, through the take home fees, which we use to buy insurance. In that year, 2018, 2019, we had a theft and loss rate of about one percent, which was very good. That's from among the forty four, forty eight hundred that were going home. So prior to the coronavirus closure on March thirteenth, we had six thousand laptops being, going home. So we continued to expand when we came into this school year. And then with the closure on the thirteenth, as you all know, I believe we talked about this at the previous school committee meeting, we distributed about ten thousand five hundred laptops and we did at that time suspend the twenty dollar take home fee due to the emergency. Just as a good news story, um, with all those laptops we've sent home, I can tell you that since March, March thirteenth, sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty one student laptops have been logged into by students, which is pretty much all of them that have gone home. And as you know, we've been doing some work to try to address internet gaps and, and certainly with some thanks to, um, Comcast for some of the changes they made during the emergency, as well as we had Sprint hotspots that were provided to us. And we also made some strategic investments to provide additional support for internet access. So the things, and the superintendent covered this, but the, the key reasons, um, for eliminating the take home fee. One is that we know going forward, we really want all students in K twelve, not only to have a one to one assigned laptop, but to be able to take it home. And in the schools that had started take home prior to coronavirus, somewhere between five and 10%, depending on the school, of students just weren't either able or willing to pay the fee. And so we, and even in the schools that were doing take home, we had a subset of students who were not accessing the technology. And it's just really, we reached a point where it's not, it can't be optional because we need the technology to do the kind of teaching and learning we have to do now. And just a couple other, you know, schools did have to spend a significant amount of time collecting and tracking the fees. Procuring a laptop insurance was challenging. And then the point the superintendent made, we now take five thousand laptops offline every year as we, because of our replacement cycle, where we replace 25% of our laptops every year. That provides us with a pool, uh, kind of a surplus of laptops that we can use as spares and loaners and as laptops we can give to students who, um, have a device that goes missing, um, or is, or is damaged beyond repair. And so this just shows you some of the numbers around this. Because we take about five thousand devices offline, some of those are not operable, right? So at the end of four years, some of those devices are, you know, they've, they've lived their life and, and they're not going to serve again. So, you know, this assumes, you see that seven thousand number? This assumes that some percentage of our five and six year old devices are not going to be, uh, operable after the fourth year. But even with that, we still have something like seven thousand devices in any given year that we can use as surplus to replace devices that are not, um, to replace devices that are either lost, stolen or damaged. And so as it relates to the, as it relates to the take home policy, the plan is, or sorry, and you, I believe all received a redlined document showing the changes to the policy. So I'm just highlighting that there's some, there's some wording changes in there, but the dominant changes to the policy are, are the obvious one of eliminating the twenty dollar take home fee because we believe we can replace laptops that go missing without incurring additional costs, um, using our surplus. We're going to include the student parent guardian consent in the signature packets that go home at the start of the year. That was another thing where schools struggled with the, collecting the forms back from families to send the laptops home. But I think, we think that we can address that by making it part of the usual signature process. And as the superintendent said, students will keep the same device for four years. So they, they changed schools within Springfield Public Schools. They're just going to take that device with them. So we think will increase kind of student sense of ownership. And basically when a particular student's device, um, goes, you know, reaches its four year limit in its life cycle, that would prompt us to go ahead and provide a replacement to that student. And just the last piece on here is a reminder of what our current policy says. So this is not a change, but I just, because we're talking about getting rid of the take home fee, I wanted to, to offer a reminder. But our, what our policy currently says and will continue to say is that if a student's device is lost, stolen or damaged, at the, the school may provide the surplus device, so five, six or seven years old. And that device can be taken home with the discretion of the school. If the same student has a second device lost, damaged or stolen in the same academic year, again, they could be provided with a surplus device to use in school, but they would no longer be allowed to take a device home at that point. And I can say in, in our experience so far with take home, I don't know that we've had any students who have actually had a second device go missing in the same school year. And the reason for the discretion the first time is we have had instances where students have, um, a tragedy like a fire in their home that's destroyed a laptop. And we want schools to have the discretion to provide that, um, a replacement and still allow the student to take it home in situations like that. I can, I will stop there and, and we can address any questions that there may be.
Thank you, Mr. Fosch. Thank you, stats. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So is, is there a way that we can find out the data of the number of children that logged into the computer and how long they were on there for any particular subject?
Within, so it's not, we can't do it in general. Um, like we can, we're not able to track how, how long they've been on kind of broadly. And we can't, but within particular applications and particular software, we can get data. So for example, all of our K to eight, K through eighth grade students use a program called iReady, um, for math and E L A enrichment. And we can get data on how many students have been using that during this, um, uh, school closure. And we can get some data on how, how, who's been using it and how much they've been using it. So it depends on the different, it depends on the different applications.
I have a piece I report later on the student use that we got from every school. So it wasn't just looking at, uh, that data was actually talking to every teacher, which students are on and happen on regularly. So we have a significant report on that coming up a little later in the agenda.
Okay.
Paul is also.
All right.
Now, that's been a good question out there.
All right. Is there a block that they can't go to any other site except school stuff?
Well, we have, we have filters, but the filters are primarily there to prevent them from going to websites that are having inappropriate content. Largely because it's kind of tricky now, right? There, there are many places on the internet that have, it's hard, it's hard, it would be hard to define what constitutes educational in the sense that there are educator, educational things in lots of places. So we, they're pretty open, but we do filter against things that have inappropriate content.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
This has been through our subcommittee, so I didn't know if Latonia wanted to speak to it.
Ms. Naylor, please. Ms. Naylor?
I did, I did definitely want to. First, I want to ask Paul, I have two things. So I wanted to, um, let me clarify, you know, some of the questions that also did come out of the subcommittee meeting. And then I want to ask Paul another question. So, um, we wanted to just make sure that everyone was aware that with the one to one, that it means one, uh, computer per student, not per family. So there were some questions from families who, who mistook and, and misunderstood that the laptop so, uh, distribution was only per household. And so we did clarify that in the subcommittee. And, and just in case folks weren't able to tune in, I wanted to make sure that that was something that we mentioned here on this platform. And also that we are looking into some type of tutorials and whatnot that we can provide for families so that when we do get ready to go back to school, they, they are a little bit more informed on the different apps that we use in the schools. And also, um, you know, how to access the computers and get on the computers. We know that a lot of our apps can also be used on, on smartphones or iPads. So kids will often gravitate to something that they know easier and how to get into, but they can't always use all the functionalities of our apps when they're on a phone or whatnot. So a lot of kids found it difficult and a lot of families found it difficult to get onto the laptop. So we talked about those things as well. And, and I'm really excited that Paul and his team and Superintendent Ward, um, at the helm, were able to really look at what went right and what went wrong. And so making sure that as we go into September, that we are a little bit more prepared, a lot more prepared, uh, to, to make sure that there's a little bit more, uh, ease in transition, um, into hybrid learning or whatever it looks like in the fall. But also a, a much better comfort as far as how to engage and how to access information and whatnot. So I wanted to just share that because it was a very thorough conversation that we had earlier today around the policy and the changes. And, and we're really excited about these changes that are going to occur. And, and so I wanted to say that, but then I wanted to also piggyback on Mrs. Gresham's question, Paul, just to state that if parents are finding that their kids are accessing inappropriate sites because of those loopholes where like YouTube, for example, uh, is something that a lot of the classes will share videos on YouTube. So if you block YouTube, then they can't access those videos, but still kids might be able to maneuver to something that's inappropriate. So if families do find that that is happening, how is it that they can make sure that, um, it, you all are aware of at least that that is happening so that we can take some extra measures?
Yes. So we do have our, we have our student help desk on Microsoft Teams. And so families could certainly, um, let us know in that. And we'll never be able to block all, any, everything that students can try to access that's inappropriate. And so that's, that's an area where it's actually even in our take home policy even that, um, you know, that, that parents and guardians do need to monitor their students' use of the computers at home. Because we can do a certain amount with the technology and the filters, but it does, it changes so fast. And so, um, we try to keep up with it. And families can certainly reach out through Microsoft Teams, through the student help desk and let us know.
Thank you so much. And this did pass unanimously in subcommittee.
Questions, follow up questions on that, Paul? Um, YouTube itself has some filters built into it that can kind of block age appropriate and certain types of material. Um, can we put together like an instruction sheet for parents on how to utilize those filters that YouTube in and of itself has?
Yeah, we, certainly. Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Thank you. And, and I, and before we, just one thing I want to say is, five years ago, we boldly went where nobody had gone.
Right.
Um, the real kudos here belong to the parents. You know, we sent those computers home. We went and got insurance because we weren't sure what the heck was going to happen. Which was a good move, which was a good move. But parents in this city have proven the old adage wrong that if you, you're given something of value, you won't appreciate it because it was given to you. They have completely disproven that adage. And because I, it appears that our families and our kids have treated our equipment with the utmost of respect. And our kudos goes out, goes out to all the families who are watching. And you deserve a lot of credit for the success of this program.
I have a question too. Have we had any parents, um, expressing difficulty with maneuvering the computer with their children?
Yes.
Certainly. Um, it's something that, you know, we, we talked some in the subcommittee and, and, um, we're doing a number of things as we, as we head towards the fall. So certainly we have produced some videos, um, to show families and students how to access different things, how to, how to connect their laptops to the internet, um, and as well. And so we're going to be producing more of those. We're also trying to do voiceover on those videos. So we have them in multiple languages. We have some, we have written documents which we have in English and Spanish. Um, but we've definitely gotten feedback that video is better. The other thing we're going to try to do is provide some in-person, um, family technology orientations in the month of August. People will have to figure out a way to sign people up because we're going to have to limit that to a certain number per session to ensure that we're consistent with public health guidelines. But we're going to try to do a variety of strategies because that was definitely, um, an issue. Because we made the switch, as, as Ms. Naylor said, we made the switch so fast. And so, um, they're just, you know, there wasn't the opportunity to really help families navigate some of the technology.
All right. So I heard you mentioned Teams. So you're using Teams rather than Dojo or are you using both?
Well, so Microsoft Teams we're using for our student help desk. And so, and some schools are using it for instruction. Some schools are using Dojo. One of the other things that we're changing for next year, and this was again, an example of something we didn't fully anticipate. We've given our schools, our, and our teachers a lot of autonomy, um, to use the tools that they are most comfortable with. And we, in all honesty, didn't fully anticipate how hard that would be for students and families. In terms of if you're a parent, I, I can speak to this as a parent myself who has two kids in the district. And it was hard to, you know, each kid was using different tools. And so we, we didn't realize, anticipate how challenging that would be for our families. So one of the changes we're making for next year is to require that all schools use a certain small set of platforms. So that if you have students in multiple schools, they should be using the same platform regardless of school.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Again, this came through, uh, subcommittee. And as is most often the case, most of our work is done in the subcommittee. And appreciate the subcommittee's work on that. But you don't always see all the work that goes on behind the scenes as we pass policies. But all of our work is done in the subcommittee. So I want to thank the subcommittee on that.
Thank you, Superintendent Ward. No other questions or comments? Is there a motion on the floor? on the floor? I told you, why don't you do it? All right, Ms. Naylor. Is there a second, please? Second. Second by Vice President Collins. Roll call. Voters require Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hirst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez? Ms. Perez, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, word is to be delivered. It's a matter of fact.
Just, just as a point of clarification, this is the first vote. We have to vote on it a second time. Patty, now that we set the 13th as a meeting, we don't usually put a lot of voting items on a, on a working session. Can we put that on so that, and can we, can we all agree that Paul can send out this new policy with draft, you know, across it so that people are aware of it and they can start making plans on it? Is that okay with the committee? If it goes out in draft form?
I, I'm thinking, Chris, maybe it's draft and then passed a first vote on June 18th so that it gives it an additional informator.
Oh, that's good.
Yep.
And, and second vote expected on, you know, August, whatever.
Informational items. Again, now this is a superintendent will give an update on the laptop take-home process. Superintendent Ward?
So when we closed down on March 12th, we had a situation where we had seven schools, I believe at the time, that were take-home schools already. But many of our other schools, we were using the one-to-one, but in school, we hadn't gone take-home yet. So we, we went with a really significant process to distribute, I think about 10,000 more laptops. So all the, the schools did a great job of reaching out to families and setting up a pickup for laptops. For families who couldn't get to the school to pick it up, we worked with one of our transportation companies, Vanful, which the mayor helped us with. And we actually distributed the laptops to the families' homes. And the intent was a laptop for every student. So that's what we're, we were going for. So again, if, if any student who still doesn't have a laptop, they can still contact the school because we have the laptops at that school. So that was a tremendous process and an effort underway. When we first closed, we did some work packets to get kids going, you know, hard copy work packets from our food distribution centers. Then we went to the, you know, the, the laptop distribution so we really could engage in remote learning. So it was an enormous effort. Just want to thank the school committee. The investment in laptops some five years plus ago made a huge difference. Had we not done that, we just wouldn't have had the technology to distribute. And we'd still be doing work packets out of the food distribution centers, which just wasn't the way forward for us. So that piece, you know, kudos to Paul and his staff and the staff at every school because they all went to the schools voluntarily to help with that distribution process. So our staffs have really stepped up to help our kids. And during this process, the teachers have been reaching out, the counselors have been reaching out to help parents in every way we can complete the work. But that piece was a big piece for us, the distribution. And Paul and his team did a great job organizing it. But the entire staff worked on making this work and reaching out to families to put this endeavor forward. But it's made a difference. And we're going to report what Barbara was talking about earlier, the, the percentage of students that have been participating in that learning. We're getting, we're looking at, we looked at the, using the technology. But a lot of the families didn't come and get a, a laptop because they already had a home computer or they already had an iPad. And the kids were already doing their work on that. So to measure who's participating, just looking at our laptops wouldn't have been enough. So we had the schools endeavor into looking at that on top of that. And we measured the work coming back from each student. And I have a report for you to report on that. But that process was a huge process that really got us going. And I was going to jump in with your permission there to be the remote learning participation. So what you have in your packets, Patty sent out something on work completion. And that shows you the percent of students in every school that were completing the work. And we broke it down into none. And then some families just didn't participate and some students, and then some most and all. So we had a, a track record of exactly who was participating in what. And we put the results out by school for you. So there's a two-page report on that. Just a quick overview of that report is about 80% of the students at the elementary level have been participating to some degree in the online work. About 20% did not participate, which if you, you know, were following what's going on in the state, some urban centers were at 30 and 40% participation. So the participation was good, but that was really based on, again, our staffs at the school. Each school had a log of effort. And we made sure there were at least three parent contacts. But some of the logs I looked at, the parents were contacted six different times by different individuals in the schools, be it the teacher, the counselor, administrator, to again, encourage them, offer support, and really try to increase that participation rate. So there's a tremendous effort by the staffs in the schools to really help with that participation. And then there are, there were several platform issues. And I was Paul's biggest supporter to get this going, let the teachers be creative and use any platform they wanted. But in doing that, what we found it was cumbersome for some parents that were adopting the multiple platforms. So we're going to limit that now that we've learned that was an issue and go with certain platforms and provide our teachers more training with those platforms. So that'll be easier for parents to participate. We're going to do a lot of training. The secondary level.
May I?
Superintendent?
Sure.
Just, just a quick question. Are you, maybe you already said this, but I, I misunderstood it. Are you looking at those schools that have really great participation? So I'm looking at Zenity and it was a 48% of all. And that's huge, right? In comparison to a lot of the other schools. So are they having conversations amongst each other as to why that, that was possible and how that was possible for them to engage in those different ways to get that many parents to participate?
Sure. We definitely have some successes. You can see there's some ups and downs there. Certainly, I think certain schools have much higher poverty rates than some other schools, more kids with some language barriers. But we have some successes. So the chief school officers are always running meetings with the teams of principals from the schools. And we're sharing best practices. And you can see there's some real positives here at the elementary level, but also at the secondary level. There's a, a difference in schools. But the secondary participation overall was 75%, which was also very good. The thing that surprised me most was our alternative schools. When we saw the participation rates across the state, we had 70% of the kids participating to some degree, even our, in our alternative schools. So again, kudos to Rhonda Jacobs and the team from the alternative schools. Because you're dealing with families and students that have a host of issues. And they really had to work extra hard to get those participation rates up. We did see some of the schools with the highest poverty rates, the hot, you know, those kinds of challenges. The participation rates were lower. I do say, I think the staff worked very hard in those schools, but I think they had a little tougher hill to climb, more language barriers, more of the, the kind of barriers that impede language. And the other pieces were some of the things that, you know, not only are we, you know, a center that feeds students, we also do a lot with mental health in our schools. You know, we have a tremendous counseling force. We have more adjustment counselors assigned in the city of Boston, which has a budget that they spend twice as much per student. We also have City Connects PBIS that we've worked at. But that work continued during remote learning, but it wasn't the same. And, you know, a lot of families were dealing with a lot of issues and working issues or working parents trying to help kids do work. So these numbers are very, very high when you look at other communities in the state that I've seen reports from. But I really want to thank and commend the staff at the school. They really stayed with this. They kept reaching out to families and kept trying to provide support. So I think it's a positive report. We would have liked it to have been even higher, but, but it's very positive when you look at some of the other numbers throughout the state. I think it's a real tribute to, again, the relentless efforts on the part of our staffs at the schools to, to get, reach out to families. So we, we put that together. We also looked at a report from Paul on just the participation with our laptops, but that was missing a lot because a lot of students were working on home computers. So this is the most comprehensive report. And it, it's in your packet for you to review in its entirety. I wanted to give you a, a brief overview. And again, school ends tomorrow, June 19th. But during the summer, and we're going to have a report later on, on summer participation, we're, we're going to build on that outreach from the schools and continue the remote learning over the summer.
So, if I may, so how do we reach out with our special needs, special education? How?
We deliver, we actually put together a special ed remote learning plan. And every special ed student had a remote learning plan developed for that student. We actually, for the kids that the laptops weren't working, we actually had iPads that went to their homes to try to help with that. But those sped teachers were reaching out and working on the goals and objectives in the special ed students' IEPs to fulfill them right from the beginning because that's a, that's a legal mandate. But our sped department did a great job on a sped remote learning plan. We did a, a plan for everyone, but we did a special one for the sped students, but that was specially designed for each student. And those teachers reached out, again, working on their goals and objectives to work with those students as well.
Okay, all right. Yeah. So is that where we can see that plan, the remote plan for those sped students?
Sure. We'll make sure that that's accessible. I'm pretty sure that that's probably on our website already, as else put it up there, but I'll make sure it's up there.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Superintendent?
Yes. This, this is not related though. Denise is trying to get back in. We lost her. And she says she's not.
Oh. We kept losing the light behind her too. She, she kept going like black and white versus color. She's probably trying to land, trying to log in now.
Yeah, you have to re-log in with these. It's, it can be tricky. Sometimes it's hard to get in. I have some trouble some mornings.
Oh, she, I think she's back.
Yep.
Yep. Good. Okay.
Super.
Again, I think the superintendent was able to hit two for the price to one. He hit the update on laptop take-home progress and remote learning participation. So any other questions or comments? Hearing them will move to.
Mayor, if I could ask, I should have changed the order on this. I should have had the update on summer programs next because it falls right into line.
Yeah.
Do you mind if we take?
With the indulgence of the school committee, we're going to jump to the first update on summer programs. Superintendent Ward, please.
I'm going to ask Lydia Martinez, our, our assistant superintendent, to give an update on our plans for the summer. Based on all the work that was done remotely and the idea that we could run a pretty comprehensive program remotely for the summer, we're going to offer all the programs we've run in the past remotely, plus Lydia and our academic team and Paul worked on a plan to offer an enrichment program for all students over the summer, hence us wanting to leave the laptops home in the summer. So Lydia is going to take you through a presentation now on all of the summer programs we're going to offer for our students remotely.
How are you, Lydia?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Lydia, you must have plenty of oxygen because it looks like you're in the middle of a jungle behind you there.
My, it's my porch. Brandon, do you have the PowerPoint? Are you going to put it up?
I do. It'll just take me one moment to pull it up.
Okay, perfect. So while Brendan does that, basically, we're going to run summer school this year from July 6th through August 6th, which was what we had planned all along. We're going to run it Monday through Thursdays, just like we've done in the past. It's going to be from eight to 1:00 p.m. with the reconstruction happening between eight and 11:00. And so we wanted to release the students in time for them to be able to get to the lunch sites to have their lunch. And so we'll be releasing the students from direct instruction at 11:00 and 11:30, from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., the teachers will then be available to the students to do just one-on-one with them, to help them with whatever they need help. And so the teachers are going to be assigned a time and the students will be able to kind of come into the classrooms and work with the teachers and other students. Next slide. So the programs that we are offering this year, we're going to start with the Early Start Program, which is a school committee endorsed program. And so the Early Start is going to provide the students who are considered academically at risk, not students that have failed. If they fail, they'll go to the recovery. We'll talk about that in a minute. But these are just kids that are considered academically at risk in either English or math. And then in the high school, we add the science. Again, it's a school committee policy. And so what the Early Start is actually doing is for the entering third grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade students. And it was designed to kind of give them also a jumpstart on their next phase of their education so that they would have some time in the schools to kind of learn the ins and outs of becoming a middle schooler and becoming a high schooler. But this year, many of the schools will also be expanding that Early Start program to include other grades as needed. And each school was given the autonomy to kind of add the additional grades that they felt were the most in need. And students were invited by the schools themselves. And so the families can check with the schools themselves to see if there are additional offerings besides the Early Starts to the rising third, sixth, and ninth graders. And so we're also going to offer the Credit Recovery, which is the program designed for students to make up classes that they failed during their high school year. Each high school is going to run their own again. And in some cases, we'll be putting some schools together if we don't have enough kids. For example, if we have an algebra class that only has two kids at one school, we can pair them up with another school. And I know that some of the schools have already been working on doing that. The course recovery is for our middle schoolers. And this is designed for kids that could possibly fail middle school unless they make up a class. And so unlike the high school where you can just fail a course because it's for credit, in the middle schools, if you fail math or English, you can stay back for the year. So this is designed to help those failing middle schoolers make it to the next grade. Next slide. Then we're also doing our extended year program. This program is for our special education students who have additional services or extended year services in, and related services designated in their IEPs. So this will fulfill the IEPs that currently have that in there and the students that need more time on learning on further IEPs. The Summer Scholars Program is a program that's designed to support students that have not been successful in earning credits at the high school level and have not yielded success at all in summer school. So those kids that tried to recover some programs during the recovery or the credit recovery that we just talked about or the course recovery, this is yet another way that we can help catch up students that need something different. And so this program allows for them to get on the computer to do some work, the credit recovery via means of different ways and different hours. So it's not our traditional hours necessarily. The schools work directly with the students to ensure that they have these opportunities to recover. Next slide. Then we're also offering the Summer Melt. And the Summer Melt program is to help our transitioning students that are going to college. And so what we know what happens is a lot of students during the summer don't make it to the college in the fall for a variety of reasons. So this program is designed for them to kind of help them transition into college and to ensure that they actually enter in the fall when it's time for them to enter. Next slide. And then this year, and it's partly due by COVID, but it's also partly due by some of the remote learning that we've been wanting to do, we're offering our Summer Exploration. And so this program that the superintendent already alluded to is built so that all children can participate. So there will be three projects available to each grade. It's going to be a K to two, a three to five, a six to eight, and a nine to 12 kind of cohort. And what they will be doing is the same project, but it's catered to their grades and it's catered to the standards for that grades. And so the projects themselves will be the same. I'll go over those in a second. And the task and the deliverables will be a little different based on the grade of the student. And then what we're doing to really get the kids to participate in this because part of this is to get And then what we're doing to really get the kids to participate in this, because part of this is to get them engaged and to keep their learning going, because we understand of the gap that some of them are, are kind of getting into because of what's happening, we're also, um, asking many of our community partners that have already stepped up for Raffle prizes. And so the students that actually complete and turn in some of these projects, including some of the Early Start and other projects, will be entered for, um, these prizes that we're collecting. So if anybody's out there and would like to, um, donate, please give me a call. I'd love to hear from you. Um, next slide. And so the project topics, um, that we're doing, and we also wanted to do this because it's also going to help us with a portrait of a graduate work that we've been doing in the district, is who am I as a person? And so we are going to be supplying some autobiographies for the students so that they can kind of see what that looks like. Um, and so what the students will research is themselves, who are they? Who are their families? Where did they come from? What's their interest? Um, what communities? So, so it's all about me, um, that we're asking them to do so that they really have to tap into working with some of their family members and, and tapping into some different resources that are within their grasp. Um, another project will be the who will I be? And this is really an inspirational project where the students are going to reflect on their hopes and dreams and then kind of research what they have to do to kind of get there. So this is kind of when I grow up, I want to be. Um, and this will help them do the research to find out whatever their dream is, what is it that's required for them to fulfill that dream? And then the third topic will be how will school help me realize my dreams? And so this is a design project. We really wanted the kids to kind of look at the ideal school. What would it look like for them? What, what would they like to come back to? How would they like to change school, um, in order to realize their dreams? And we're thinking that all three of these topics are going to be good also for the teachers that will be receiving the kids in the fall to get to know them a little better. So we're going to kind of figure out where the kids are going and make sure that those teachers have these projects. Next slide. And so the empowerment zone, um, we just wanted to include them because they are a part of us. And so the empowerment zone will be hosting their own centralized summer programs. And so the families are receiving invitations from those schools directly. However, if a family does not get an invitation for whatever reason, they can go to each of the empowerment zones, um, school's webpage, and there's a link there for them to be able to apply for that. And if they can't get to the school's website or are not sure what school the child will go to, the empowerment zone's mainway webpage will also have the link where parents can just kind of click on that link and kind of apply, um, to attend one of the offerings that they, um, have. And so this is what we will be offering this summer. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Martinez. Any questions or comments? Assistant Superintendent Martinez or Superintendent Ward?
Actually, the team did a great job on it, um, and, uh, really, really thrilled with what they came up with. And the idea of having the enrichment program that we added to, to the matrix this summer, because there was some learning loss as we were getting remote learning up and, and for some families getting used to the platforms. So I think it was important we tried to offer something to keep them engaged in the summer so we don't have that summer learning loss. And I just congratulate Lydia and the team for doing a great job with it.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Martinez. Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you, Lydia.
We'll now move to the last informational item, which would be the fall, opening, updating. And again, uh, the superintendent, this changes, I don't want to say daily, but almost every other day. I know in our cabinet head meetings, the superintendent will get a taste of test season. I'll let Denise have a taste.
Thanks, Mayor. Now, we had, uh, we've been leaning on the commissioner heavily across the state and he's been having meetings with us and discussing what the possibilities are. He's put a team together. He has epidemiologists, Department of Public Health involved. You know, he has educators, he has the unions involved, parent groups, to really get broad input on this and look at it from an educational perspective, but also a public health perspective. And to think about the safety and get the epidemiologists in to say, what are we likely going to be able to do and/or not do? And again, it's speculative at this juncture because as you've seen, some states that maybe reopened a little too fast, they've had a, a slide up with the infection rate. So, um, and, um, I think Jeff Riley did a nice job of describing how we're going to have to approach the fall, at talking about us being nimble and able to look at something that offers some alternatives, but adjust accordingly based on how this whole crisis is going with infection rates. At this juncture, based on, on what he's put out and working with his team, and we should have guidance in a few weeks in which we can use to develop a plan. What, what, what I've been hearing from, um, pretty consistently is the thought that if the infection rates continue to improve, we'd be moving to some kind of hybrid model where a portion of the students would come in on a rotating basis so that we could deal with the, deal with the numbers, keeping all the, the safety guidelines in place, you know, the social distancing, the masks. Uh, Desi is going to put out recommendation relative to PPE requirements, uh, for, for students, staff and everything. And taking a look at all that and have some, um, some portion of the students in every day and the other students continuing with remote learning and rotate that, whether it be a group A, group B every other day, or something along those lines. Or earlier on, they were talking about a week A, week B, but I'm hearing less of that lately because that whole week away, you know, having that, um, teacher interface with kids, uh, every week is important. So more like rotating the days. But that seems to be where the group is leading towards now. But I think a lot will change, uh, again, as, as this crisis moves forward. How are things going here in Massachusetts and, and what is the right thing to do with that? Clearly, uh, the commissioner, and I think it's the right thing to do, uh, we're in the process of, uh, looking at surveys statewide and reaching out to our families and saying, if we were to come back in a hybrid model, so the students will be coming back in some days, would you want to participate in that? Or do you only feel comfortable with your student, uh, continuing remotely for now? And try to get an idea on, on what percent of the families and what students in each school, parents would only feel comfortable with, uh, coming back remotely. That would be an option for parents. And we'd make that an option at every school. And then highly likely with the students who are returning, looking at dividing those students up into some kind of rotating groups to come in on rotating days so we can adhere to all the social distancing guidelines. Trying to, in every way we can, get some information out to families so they know, right now, it looks like those will be the options. They may not be what, where we're at in August, but families need to make childcare plans because I think they rely on us for childcare. And so we want them to know that highly likely, it doesn't look like we'd be able to open up school full-time for every student every day in the fall. We wouldn't be able to come close to the social distancing guidelines that need to be adhered to. Another huge logistical piece is the transportation. Now, the mayor and I have been doing a lot of talking about it, but making sure we have the social distancing guidelines in our transportation system. And, you know, public transportation is a challenge with a crisis like this. So, you know, we'll have to keep the numbers down in the buses as well as in the schools. So we're also asking the families, if we were to come back and if you want your student to come back in for some live education on a rotating basis, uh, which families would want to transport their children and not have them use, use transportation. Again, that way we can help make our plans relative to our bu- bus routing, which we have to be engaging in over the summer. So I do see at this point, everything I've heard leads me to believe the Commonwealth is going to move towards a hybrid plan with some remote, some, uh, live classroom. If, again, the infection rates stay around the same or continue to improve as they have, uh, we're going to work closely with the Department of Public Health, making sure we're following all the guidelines. Desi is going to produce a set of guidelines. And as the commissioner said, I could produce some guidelines now. In August, we may have to change some of them depending on infection rates, but trying to plan the best we can with all the information we have, as we're dealing with a situation where the state hasn't passed its budget yet. So I think, thank you for the, the support with that, uh, piece earlier because the funding piece, as we're trying to do all this, depending on the constraints we're going to have with funding, is going to make a, a huge logistical challenge even more difficult. So that's what we're up against. My sense is, from what I've got from the commissioner so far and Desi, is they're going to give us some option, options on this hybrid and the system will have to submit an option to Desi for approval. So that's where we're at right now. Uh, I think that, you know, there's some speculation in there. Again, uh, in the fall, it could look different, but that's the best information I have right now as an outlook on what could occur in the fall as our students return. It's clear that there's been learning loss across the state. The participation rates are, are really challenging in some places. And the commissioner would like to reopen live for students, but in a safe manner. So would we. We know that that venue would be best for kids, but we have to do it in a safe manner so we don't have a huge problem in the fall, um, with, 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 with the whole crisis, uh, getting worse. Uh, so we're trying to hit that middle ground as a state. And I think it's important that the Commonwealth is relatively consistent with this. So if we're going back with a hybrid and other communities in close proximity are hypothetically staying completely remote, then how would our staff have the childcare to even come back to, to work? And how would, you know, how would the public have that childcare? So I, I think we're trying to strike that middle balance and the state's trying to strike that middle balance. And, and, uh, I think the commissioner has a great team. We're looking for their guidance on that. And we'll be getting some guidance and trying to formulate a plan and work out all the logistical issues around that guidance. And that'll be our task, uh, which would be daunting this summer, but the team's been working hard on it. And we're going to continue that planning and, and be ready for what comes in the fall to execute whatever plan we're able to do at that time as effectively as possible.
I mean, knock on wood, we're prepared if we have to somehow stay remote. We've, we've already done it. We can retool. As I stated before, prior to before the meeting, the numbers here in the city, I think it's the fifth or sixth day, single digits, as low as two. That trend can stay. The other big question, uh, superintendent and I would, uh, through Commissioner Riley or Desi or Department of Public Health, DPH, they, they're, you know, we're open. We're doing temperature checks, uh, to make sure, uh, that, uh, whether there's a question of anybody coming in the city hall or public buildings and certain guideline, they're looking to clarify that. Because there was a question there, will temperature checks, will they be cleared that you don't have to do temperature checks? Which hopefully we continue moving in the right direction. Or if there is, where does that temperature check occur? Does it occur at the bus stop, before you get on the bus? Does it occur when you get into school? How do you get back? It goes to teachers. So that's still evolving, I guess, still.
Still evolving. The latest guidance.
They were saying it would go away.
Epidemiologists in the Mass Department of Public Health, is there's too many false positives with temperature checks and it would be rather difficult to do as we re-enter. We have to have some other ways of ascertaining who has the virus. But they've been, originally, we're planning, you know, we were going to make major purchases around temperature checks, but as they've looked at it, it's led to more problems. So they seem to be moving away from that now. But again, we're going to need to be nimble. That could change too, based on infection rates, but, uh.
Hopefully it does.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, hopefully we, we, we wouldn't have that because, because there's been a lot of false positives and, and that, that's created some other, another huge set of problems for us.
And that's a logistical check. And then, uh, working with Pat Sullivan, the superintendent, as we've done here, your flow of, uh, pedestrian traffic, the, the one ways you can see in the city hall, but the arrows. You can't go here, only one staircase. So all that stuff, the plexiglass we have up, so, um.
Yeah, we have a, a facilities team. And again, Pat Sullivan's been outstanding working with Pat Roach and our team. We're looking at every one of our buildings and, and how we have to configure to deal with the social distancing guidelines. Looks different every school. How the nurse's office, how, how, uh, how we're going to have to have isolation rooms, if you will, at every school. So we're looking at that. We're having our, our head nurse, Jean Clancy, look at every school and come up with a plan that makes sense around that. We've already started a great deal of that work. So we're ready, but that, it's comprehensive what we'd have to do in the buildings as well. But there'll be a complete set of guidelines out. We'll be following that. And we've already done a tremendous amount of work with the information we have right now relative to how to, how to deal with the, uh, building issues around this. But we'd be looking at classrooms and set up the social distancing. The commissioner talked about, um, wearing masks and probably, um, more at the high school level than the early elementary where we'd be pushing more of the social distancing because it's, the high school kids can handle that better. So, uh, different, uh, strategies at the different levels relative to wearing the mask, but making sure we're following the guidelines and we have all the PPEs. Mayor's been tremendously supportive. The city team's been, uh, doing bulk orders and the mayor is helping us, uh, out of the FEMA money, um, get some of the PPEs and acquire that so we wouldn't have to take it out of our education funds. So I, I do appreciate that.
We're stock, I, you already, we're stockpiling everything we can get our hands on. I hope I'm wrong. But we're stockpiling everything that we get our hands on, uh, if it's ever needed again. But really now on the superintendent's update, open it up to you on the questions. I know you get the questions too.
Oh, yeah.
Just three questions, Mr. Mayor. When you do get guidance from Desi, which you're going to get it in a written form, would you immediately get it to the committee members, um, so that they have it? That's not the plan. We all understand. That won't be the plan. But the guidance, at least we'll have something that we can say. Because we're going to, you know, all the members are going to be bombarded with questions. And so if they, well, okay, the guidance came out. I've gone through it. This is what it says. Understanding this is not your plan, but this is guidance. But if you could get that right away to the committee, I'd appreciate it.
So we'll open it up, please, to the, uh, the committee.
I have a couple of questions, um, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things that we were doing head start, we was going to do temps, but they said, no, not to do that because everybody's body temperature, normal body temperature is different. So we're not doing that. But I was going to ask superintendent, do we, do we follow early education and care guidelines as well as Desi?
We'd be following the Desi guidelines for most of our students, but for our early childhood, our preschool classes, we'd, we'd be looking at the early childhood guidance as well.
Okay.
As it comes out through Desi.
Okay. All right. And do we have to submit a plan? Do we have a, a timeline that we have to submit a plan to Desi?
That, as of now, we don't, uh, because they haven't even given us the guidance yet. But they will be asking us to submit some kind of plan to them. We don't have any details on what that's going to look like yet. But I think they're going to give us some options. But I think they're going to be pretty tight options. It's not going to be just do whatever you think is appropriately, as appropriate. I think that they're going to pretty much strongly encourage, if not demand, some kind of hybrid model and then offer us a few options to choose from within that plan. But he's had people working statewide on, which, which is actually very helpful. And if there's some continuity from district to district, I think that's very helpful also.
Okay. All right. Can I ask a question? Ms. Gresham, were you going to ask another question?
You can go ahead. Yep.
Thank you. So the first question is pretty simple, I think, around, um, how do you continue? How will you plan to continue, um, keeping community partners in the loop as to when and how they would be able to continue to engage with students? I know that a lot of programs like AmeriCorps, YMCA and whatnot have been involved in the schools and really helping to provide additional support to students that need them. And so at what point will you be able to let those types of supportive programs, uh, know when they're able to and, and at what type of, you know, input or, or way that they can part? or way that they can participate with the schools and with students?
Yeah, again, we're waiting for the D E C guidance on that also because that's going to be a big piece of the D E C guidance. But we always encourage all of our school staffs. They work very, very closely with a lot of agencies, mental health agencies, different programs. So that's been ongoing during this crisis, very important during this crisis, actually. And that needs to be ongoing at the school level. And as we get more and more information, we'll get it out for our chief communications officer, Azal Kavon, to get as much information out there as we can. So different agencies will know what we're doing and then how we can coordinate services because it's a joint venture.
Now, will there be a policy or some sort of how that engagement will occur and what that will look like, just so that we're aware of how those guidelines will be applied?
So my sense is the state is going to pass out guidance on that. And I think it'll even talk about even agencies, can they visit the school? How can they visit? How can they interact? We've been told to expect guidance on that from D E C.
Okay, great. And I have one last question.
We haven't seen any of it yet.
Okay. I have one last question and I kind of mentioned this to you already, Superintendent, at work. But I also don't want to forget to emphasize what the plans are going to be from the state on end date as far as it relates to people who have children that will be unattended during the day. So a lot of folks have been able to work remotely. And a lot of our jobs will be requiring us to go back to the offices in the fall. And so my anticipation is that a lot of students that now have parents that are home with them during the day will not have parents home with them during the day once we get into the fall. And so if a child, you know, has an older sibling or something that's old enough to watch them, that's one thing. But I think for those who don't have older siblings or so, one of my constituents was telling me, I work second shift and I have a five and six year old. There's no way that they can be home alone and I have no family. I have nowhere to send them. So part of the question, I guess, is, you know, how do we make sure that the district, because I know I'm going to advocate on the M A S C side of it, but how do we make sure the district is keeping the commissioner and all of these who are involved in these different task forces informed of the needs of folks in our communities that are urban, that may be different than other communities? But then also, how are we going to share those resources and information for folks? Because traditionally, people could go to daycare or childcare, but those types of opportunities are no longer available in the way that they were before COVID. So I'm just really concerned, not just as a parent, but as a community person, that we're going to have a lot of kids left unsupervised who are going to engage in a lot of things that they probably shouldn't be engaging in while they're at home unattended.
You know, I think that's a great point. And that's why, as the commissioner broke out some information about this hybrid model early, even though it didn't have a lot of definition, I thought we should try to get as much as we knew out to the public so people could make plans. And I think this childcare piece and our role in it, you know, people don't realize that the workforce depends on that. So getting as much information out as early as we can so parents can try to make arrangements is a major issue because that's hard. The truth is, given the social distancing guidelines, we're not going to be able to pull everyone back in in September. Nobody thinks we're going to be able to do that. So I don't want the public to think that all of a sudden, come that fourth week of August, we're going to be able to say, all of a sudden, the kids are going to be going back every day. And that's why we wanted to get this information out early. And then look at what, you know, childcare providers are out there and what they're doing so that people can seek other options. But that is a major piece for our families, that childcare. One thing we've done a lot of work on, because we've done a lot of work in planning, I had Paul identify the number of students that have siblings and siblings in other schools. Believe it or not, we have 13,000 students that have siblings in multiple schools. So as we're assigning, if it's group A, group B, we're going to assign those siblings on the same schedule. So we're going to notify the schools. These kids have siblings in multiple schools. So this whole family will be in group A regardless of which school. So if older brothers and sisters are helping out with younger kids, they're all on that same schedule and can follow that schedule. So we're doing everything we can do to help with that. But I'll tell you, when we closed on March 12th, that was a huge concern. You know, and I know I shared it with the mayor at the time, how people depend on us. And as we reopen, this reopening is going to be even more difficult, I think, and harder to navigate than the closing. So I think getting as much information as we can out as early as we can, knowing that some of it's going to change. But it's the best information we have now. And then being able to work with the community and put as much as we can on our website to help families navigate this situation is important. But it's something we really worry about.
It's one of the first things Danny, Superintendent Ward, said. We were here Sunday night, about seven thirty, we came, eight o'clock at night. That was going to be a huge issue.
That and getting our, you know, we were worried about the childcare and we were worried about, and we worked all weekend to try to get our lunch centers open. And we got them open for Monday. But we were here meeting Sunday night on that. Because a lot of our families depend on us for the childcare piece, plus the heating, plus the mental health services. So how do we deliver all that? And that's going to be part of the task. But a big piece of it is, how do we help families navigate it? But a big piece of it is the sibling piece. And we're going to put something out within the next couple of days to all the schools that'll identify that for them and make that planning better. And say to parents, you know, if there's a way, we missed one, just let us know and we'll make that adjustment. So all their kids will be on the same schedule, regardless of the school they're at.
I know it seems daunting, but we've had a can do attitude. We want to put everything on the table. I know if Ms. Naylor's done, I'll go to Ms. Hearst, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry. I know. I'm going to work on getting that taken care of. So I know that this is not easy, Superintendent. And I know that you all have been doing a lot of planning. And I know that we actually had an opportunity to talk about this yesterday. You know, I guess what's in place now concerns me just because I know that for some of us who have resources, that it's hard, never mind for those who don't. And I do think it's going to be really critical to ensure that, you know, families in all corners of the city get the information so that they can plan, even though it's going to be ever changing, like Chris said earlier. I just, I'm wondering what else we can do to help make it as seamless as possible. And I had said to you, you know, sometimes it's crazy when we have to have a two hour delay. Never mind when a family has to, you know, figure out what rotation they're on, like what rotating schedule they're on. And so I guess I'm just trying to, you know, I'm hopeful that D E C and E E C will give some direction around, you know, what we can do to make sure that the announcement goes out far and wide. And, you know, is there going to be any P S As? What can we do? Because I do think that it's, what happens is that somebody hears it from this one and they hear from that one. And there's a lot of misinformation.
Misinformation, sure.
And that, I think, is scary. And so I'm wondering if one will have it at pace? Like, will we ensure that it's, you know, that that information is going to get disseminated for kids who might be transferring in from other districts? Like what that's going to look like so that it's available at every single door? And then last but not least, I think I wanted to ask about the opt out clause or the opt in. Is it all or nothing? Like, what happens if a family opts out but then decides, you know, I now have to go back to work, like I can no longer work remotely? Is that sort of set in stone or do they have some flexibility around being to then opt in?
And I should have explained that. Obviously, this is all flexible. We're asking for folks for a good faith estimate. But if a family, because infection rates are going up, feels they need to go all remote or the opposite, I have to go back to work and I need to come in live. It's subject to change and all they'd have to do is notify the school and we would set that up for. That has to be flexible. And we have to be very nimble in how we work with families around this and meet the needs. But that was something I should have mentioned earlier. Thanks for bringing that up. But there will be complete flexibility with that.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have, Mr. Mayor. So Superintendent, are you getting back the surveys that went out to parents?
So we were going to go with strictly a survey. And some of the schools have gone with a paper survey. But in addition to that, because the paper surveys, we usually get about 20% back in, we actually asked the school staff to reach out to the families directly because they're already contacting them and actually have a discussion and answer all their questions. So the school staffs have been reaching out directly and we haven't depended on the paper survey. And then the staff fills out a survey based on the discussion. So the parent can ask some questions, establish that connection. And that's what people have been working with their child all during this crisis and live beforehand. So we're working through all that. We have several of them back. But I think the personal connection is more important. So we're having that individual reach out to everybody. And we're in process on that and our staffs were working on that. So very often, it would be a teacher that works with that family, the counselor, the administrator, actually going through, what would your preference be? What about transportation? And again, answering all those great questions that are going to come up in that process. Do I get to keep my laptop? Yes, you do. And again, you know, we're going to work in with Azal to have a significantly robust communication plan and putting out information in as many languages as possible and to the different areas of the city that we know are somehow, sometimes are a little harder to get information out. Because when you don't get information out, as Denise said earlier, you get rumors and then misinformation. And then we have nervous. So to create that dialogue and also to make the schools the center of that information because the families have relationships at every school. So we'll have staff in the schools all summer so that people can ask any questions with people they know and people they trust.
Okay, all right. Perfect. Thank you.
Superintendent, one more thing for clarification. I know that we've talked about this and we saw some reports from the commissioner around kids who have special education or special needs. And when it comes to transportation and things like that, that there are some options for those families. And so I wanted to just make sure that we clarify and touch on that point for families who may be wondering how they're going to tend to their students that do have special needs. And so that we are, if you could elaborate a little bit on what you do know for those parents and those that are concerned about that population.
So our intent is to continue services for our special needs students, probably under a hybrid plan, but making sure we're attentive to it. They all had a remote learning plan while we were out. We're going to keep those services going to meet the goals and objectives in that plan. Now, for students with special needs, if they have special transportation in their I E P, that minivan is mandated by law. But again, a student may, or a parent may or may not want to participate in that given some of the social distancing issues with that. So we'd be offering to them that they wouldn't have to participate in that if they wanted a transport. And if they have special education in their I E P because of the significance of the need, some parents could also opt for, we would reimburse them some of the transportation costs following the guidelines. So that's being relayed to parents through the schools and through the special education staff and our special ed department. And I should have embellished on that a little more earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we'll move to reports of standing committees. Student relations, parent concerns, Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
The buildings and maintenance committee, Ms. Collins?
I was unfortunately unavailable for the meeting earlier. There was an update on the Berry Homer. Oh, okay. Thank you. And Brightwood Lincoln is really moving along. I know Peter Murphy, Peter, not Peter Murphy, Peter Garby. If anyone's interested, if you give him a call, he'll arrange for you to be able to go through the building. It's really moving along. And it's actually kind of easier rather than try to get a group. If he can arrange, because everybody's schedule is different. And he's willing to try to do that. So if you could contact him, if you've got an interest, that'd be good.
Okay, any comments on Vice Chair Collins' report? Okay, Legislative and Contracts Committee, Ms. Perez?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Curriculum and Program Committee, Ms. Hearst?
None at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hearst. Budget and Finance, Vice Chair Collins?
We covered the items earlier in the agenda.
Vocational Education Committee, Attorney Murphy?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. Technology Committee, Ms. Naylor?
All items were covered on the agenda, sir.
Thank you. School Safety Committee, Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Special Subcommittee, Mrs. Staff, Demograph, Strategic, Sports, Ms. Perez?
No report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Report of the representative. Representative. Benny, I think we lost him.
Benny was called to work. He had to leave.
Benny, we wish you the best. Good young man.
Yeah, his graduation speech is spectacular.
Report of the Superintendent, Superintendent Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. I included a report in your packet and Denise and I were talking about this earlier. Yolanda puts it together for us every year and I usually deliver it at each high school's graduation.
Yes.
Full secondary report, the scholarships that we know of today and what's been reported and which students are going to which schools and that kind of thing. So that report is in your packet. We sent it out to you. Again, I apologize, but during the graduations, that's usually a big part of each school's graduation and you get it. But I told Denise I'd put it on the agenda for this meeting so I could give you an overview with the report. And then each school's items are in there. But the report's very, very positive. So what Yolanda had as reported, you know, from the students to their counselors today, and it's ever changing, is that so far, the kids from our graduating class have accumulated over $18 million in scholarships. Really rather incredible. If you look at some other pieces, over 303 of the students have already taken dual enrollment courses. 323 are going to go to four year colleges, 660 to two year colleges, 480 to the military career or career center. 72 students won John and Abigail Adams scholarships, which is full tuition to state colleges and universities. As of right now, we had 1,279 students total go through the graduations. We're going to have more in August. The overall total is going to be 1,463. Again, that's speculative with the students that are in line and they only have a course to make up or something to get to graduation. But again, very positive. 67% of the class overall, again, reports that plan to attend college either two or four year. And then 33% to the military career or career training. And then as part of the report, it breaks it down by every school. So you can see what the school statistics are like that. Yolanda, Dr. Johnson did a tremendous job with the counseling staff to pull this together. And, you know, Lydia talked about the summer melt program that Yolanda runs every year. So a big thing we do is because there's a lot of summer melt. You know, I happen to serve on a college board and we lose a lot of kids over the summer that plan to go to college but don't follow through on everything. So keeping people working over the summer so that those kids really follow up on their plans is a key piece and they plan to stay engaged in that. But it's a great report and I encourage you to take a good look at that, but rather significant. There's a letter in your packet and some significant updates. We had a meeting today with, you know, M S B A and We had a meeting today with, you know, MSBA and working with our school team and Peter Garvey and his team. That Brightwood and Lincoln project are progressing tremendously every day, really going well. You know, we're really online. We didn't lose any time with COVID-19. The project kept going. I know Maria's nodding. I think, you know, if you're driving by it every day, it's absolutely incredible and it's going very, very well. So that was an update we had at the meeting. Very, very positive news for you on the Berry Homer. As you know, we submitted a plan and Peter Garvey described it as three telephone books full of information, educational plan, put the whole thing together, submitted design, usually get pages back from MSBA looking for changes in the plan. There were a few minor items all that we had to submit for full approval of schematic design. So we submitted those today. So that project is approved, our schematic design is improved, and we're ready to move forward. As part of that project, there was some very positive news on the development with the park today. And we put a video together of all the, the whole design layout so the community can access it and the whole design of the park and other pieces in it. Help me, Mayor, Article 97?
Article 97. We're very appreciative of the, our local delegation and Governor Baker pushed that through and then the other piece of getting that monstrosity of MCDI finally come out. So two fronts, what I said at the Zoom meeting today, a brand-new school which enhances that neighborhood, a brand-new park that enhances that neighborhood and getting that monstrosity of MCDI down for all the great families, good families in that area. So that's moving forward.
Well, thanks to the mayor and his staff because moving that Article 97 is not easy and they were on the legislative team. Our legislative team was great. By getting a legislature to act on things like that during a crisis like this was rather incredible. But the Article 97 was a big worry for us. We needed it. We had to have control of the land to move forward with schematic design approval. We have it. So that's great news. And Billy Baker from the mayor's staff was just on that all the time, but very, very positive.
One question, Mr. Superintendent and Mr. Mayor. So the building, old MCDI building, do you know when they're going to tear that down or move it or what's going on with it?
As far as I'm concerned, yesterday. I know we're behind $3 million. Get, get the, I can't say what it was. Get it down ASAP.
Yeah, so we're really moving forward on it, but the park piece is exciting too. And there's going to be a virtual presentation that we made today that the public can access. And Mark Hall and Peter Garvey from that office are going to be working with the community to get information out on that. So it's something that we, everyone will be able to see that virtual presentation. The mayor was on it today, but I thought that went very well. Some good news is we were reapplying for our Recovery High School grant, the $500,000 grant to run our Recovery High School, you know, competitive grant. And our grants office has been very successful. Fonda Jacobs and her team delivered on that and we'll have that $500,000 grant again to come in our Recovery High School. Just came in yesterday. Yeah. I think another piece of positive news, I included an arrest report and a 10-year comparison. It was in the information sent out to you and showing that in 10/11, the arrests in the schools were 356. When we closed down this year, it was 32. You know, our diversionary program, all the staff training for the officers, the data is very, very positive and you can see the trend down every year in those arrests. And the arrests typically now are down. We don't, we don't arrest for disturbing lawful assembly and minor pieces. We even have a diversionary program so it doesn't go on kids' records. So that's a very, very positive report. And again, it's in your, in your information that you have. Graduations, just a positive report for you on the virtual and what I'd call the personal graduations that each school put together. We had a great virtual graduation over two weeks on TV. Brendan Holland, I'm going to give him another shout out from Focus Springfield. He described the number of hours he put into it as 100-plus hours. Unbelievable, the quality presentation he put together, you know, just worked. I'm always proud when it's one of our graduates. I remember when Brendan was at Renaissance School. And so one of our graduates stepping up and just doing this on his own time, working for Focus Springfield, but just stepping up so our kids would have a quality graduation experience. But in addition to the virtual graduation, our team put together, our high school principals and their teams, a personal experience for every school. And George described it as several hours for two straight days and just bringing the kids in one at a time and really, you know, giving them that quality experience as a family, a putnam. Tad had four nights because so many had to go through at Central. And I talked to one of the parents from Central and just a quality experience. He's still going tonight. SciTech was going yesterday and tonight. So everyone really, kudos to the staff. They did the personal graduation, but again, keeping all the social distancing and safety guidelines in place. But we had the kids in the caps and gowns. We had the picture. We had the stage experience. So they have something that's memorable. Many times it was car parades. Something a little different at every school, but a personal piece at every school so that regardless of which school you went to, that was part of it. And the graduations, some of the graduation speeches, I'm always touched again by our alternative schools, Ronna Jacobs' team, and then some of the kids, the speeches were incredible. But I, I thought a highlight this year was one of our speeches from SciTech, our salutatorian who started as a special ed child and was actually mute at one time, but has MCAS in the top exemplary range and just has achieved tremendously at SciTech. The speech thanking all the staff over the years that did so much for them. I'm going to take it and send it to Jeff Riley because he was talking about how grateful he was to some of the Sped teachers because his daughter's in Sped. But it was, it was more than touching. So just a great, great, great speeches. Our kids are always wonderful and they were, they were really special again this year. And I think due to the work of the team and our high school principals, I think the parents had a very positive and students have something and something they can remember forever. And Brendan distributed a handout to me today and over 21,000 people watched our virtual graduations. So our audience was the biggest audience we ever had. And Azelle was telling me and her family, people from around the country watched the streaming and were giving trade feedback. So there were a lot of special pieces to it that families will now have a memory forever. So just again, kudos to our team and our staff at the high schools because that was special. In addition to that, every one of our elementary and middle schools did some kind of stepping up ceremony. Again, our kids, you know, our fifth graders, eighth graders, all of our kids, on March 12th, they didn't get to see their classmates again. So they tried to arrange some kind of ceremony at every school and those have been going on and they've been really received well by a lot of parents and we've gotten a lot of feedback. So, you know, we had some encouragement from school committee. We always had schools doing something, but we thought this year, making sure every school did something special. And the CSOs worked really hard with the principals to orchestrate that. And lastly, in your package, you're going to see the contracts reports and if you have any questions on those, Pat or I would be available to answer them. So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent Wardley. Any questions or comments on the?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. So I just wanted to go back to really quickly the superintendent's report regarding the police reports or the report where he talked about our SROs in the school. I think it's important to touch on that just because we know that that right now is a pressing issue and it, there's, it's garnered a lot of attention. But more importantly, Latonia and I had an opportunity to sit with the superintendent yesterday on a panel. And it was a really, I thought, in my own opinion, I thought it was a good conversation. I thought it was an encouraging conversation. Again, it was a conversation that I had had with Vice Chair Chris Collins, you know, regarding some of the concerns that were coming up. And so I do think that for the viewing audience, they should know that those concerns haven't been lost on us. My hope is that we're going to be able to talk about them during those August meetings as well. But I really want to be able to point out that we need to have more input from the community at large. I know that there are certain groups that are calling for the police to be removed completely. I've said this, or I said it last night on the stage and I'll say it again publicly, you know, as a mother and as a, as a school committee member, I, you know, I want my kids to be safe. I know I also don't want them to have any fear or anxiety around our police because that's not what I want them to feel. And so I don't think that the school committee should make any broad sweeping changes without having some real conversations about what are some of the best evidence models out there? What does the community want to see? Because I still think that you have parents and community members and even students who want to be able to have good rapport with their officers that are in their schools and they don't necessarily want them completely taken out. We don't, of course, want them to over-police and we, of course, don't want them to abuse their authority. And so I do think that it's important that we have those conversations because they're, they are important to have. And I don't want folks to think that we're not thinking about it because we are. And many of us have children or have loved ones that are in the district. And, you know, I think that one of the things that we hear a lot is how do we strengthen our relationships with the police? And my fear is, is that we can't, we can't pull them out and then expect our kids to develop or strengthen a relationship with officers that aren't there. So I just think that we need to be able to have those conversations as well. And maybe we may not agree, but I do think that it's important to be able to have those conversations and for the community know, to know that those issues are not lost on us.
Denise, I appreciate you bringing that up because I, I wanted the superintendent to finish his report. I think you and I are doing something next week with the Pioneer Valley Project Youth Voices on that, I think next Thursday evening. And I think we talked about different issues of COVID-19 coronavirus, about misinformation getting out there and some groups that are quoting statistics that are 12, 14 years ago. And I, I think you've seen the statistics of suspensions have gone down tremendously. The last resort of an arrest, which would be on some type of criminal, down tremendously. The MOA or MOU that we renegotiated was key.
Right.
Because we said to administrators, teachers, principals, whatever, you cannot utilize officers. And, you know, I could talk about the Charlie Yeoman's, Maj Sharif, all the great relationships there. You cannot utilize those officers, he or she, for any type of discipline action that has to be dealt through to the schools or tough love type things. And that, we hammered out on that.
Yeah.
The other thing too is, this all stemmed, and God rest his soul, Reverend Theodore Brown, which was some time ago before some of our, our time. And then the craziness that has occurred across the nation with these school shootings, knock on wood, we've been very lucky. Denise, I think you had a really good point. For our, the parents that speak to me or the students, they've had positive relationships and seeing an officer, he or she, in that with programs and a different way and supporting on that is key. Now, we want to hear from the community. Where there has been a couple of glitches or situations, those have been dealt with or continue to be dealt with. But I think that your point about a broad, all of a sudden a sweeping, broad-based change there, get a highlight all the good that has happened, the challenges that we've been able to conquer, what we've done and just get some of the misinformation that has been put out there. Because I, I think Danny and I face all the time, they're quoting information.
Yeah.
From 10, 12, 14 years ago on it. And, you know, the comments making about the pipeline to prison, we, I mean, you just highlighted some of the things here, what are, how successful our students are. And that's not fair, nor is that right. If there's an issue, we want to know about it and we will deal with it. And I think we've been proactive, but I appreciate you, Ms. Hurst, bringing up, but there has been some really positive relationships built and our young, our kids seeing officers, he or she, in a different light, not coming to a, a call that was made out in the neighborhood. And then some of the spin-off programs we've done with some of those officers, Brookings School, we do that in other schools. It's been positive. I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything we do is perfect and I'm far from perfect, but that has to be said, the drastic measures, I know most, majority of parents speak, speak to me or students, they want to make sure that their kids are safe. Plus, we put in a tremendous amount of technology and physical plan improvements in our school, knock on wood. I don't want to jinx this. We haven't had those terrible issues that have occurred across the country. So I appreciate you bringing that up and I look forward to that, the group, which will not agree with what I have to say and sometimes with you, Ms. Hurst, but we want to work with them, but we want to be realistic and sensible.
I, I think constructive dialogue has to happen. We have to have exchanges and be able to discuss things in a civil manner. And that hasn't gone on enough in this country, but those are the kind of exchanges we need to have. And one thing I will say for the school committee, over the years, every time the MOU has come up, we have looked at it and made improvements. We have taken a look at what's working, what's not working. So we're operating very, very differently than we did at one time. The last MOU, we put in the most training we've ever had, a complete NASRO training, you know, and several elements. Our Crisis Prevention Institute getting certified, the whole verbal, non-verbal de-escalation. And then extra training days. Last year, we used them for special education because so many of the times we have incidents in our alternative schools. We're dealing with special ed students and how to work with special ed students. This year, we're exploring some training and I think Denise, you were the one who gave me a lead on this with Michelle Palladini during those training days. But we've put a tremendous amount of training in for the staff. We've also improved the MOU around removal of officers. So I have complete say on that so that if an officer isn't working out, I just have to make a call to the commissioner and we're able to move an officer out. Because, you know, that, that work isn't a fit for everybody. The new commissioner is actually saying we can also have now, after they, they go through a screening process where people apply, we can have a team in the school department actually take a second look before they even get started. So every time that MOU has come up, we've worked hard to improve it. We've improved the training. We've improved the supervision and we've added the diversion program. So the data has improved. So no one was satisfied and the school committee was a big part of that push to keep improving that MOU. And like the mayor said, it's a work in progress. We need to keep getting better.
I understand. I think we just need to ensure that people felt heard, especially during this particular time in our country and even right here in Springfield, that people feel heard because they have a lot of concerns and they now feel like they have an opportunity to, to be able to, to voice their concerns. I think it's also important that even if we don't necessarily agree on some things, to be able to acknowledge or be respectful of the idea that, you know, the school-to-prison pipeline is a real thing and what we're trying to do in Springfield is to mitigate and not contribute to that actual phenomenon. And so I think, you know, I think that parents just want to feel heard and especially parents of children of color. They want to make sure that we understand and that we hear them.
When tensions run high, people talk in bumper stickers. The kind of meeting that, that both... The kind of meeting that that both Ms. Naylor and Mrs. Hurst went to, that's what we need. We need people talking and listening to each other. We don't need platitudes. We don't need bumper stickers. We don't need, we need discussion. We need to hear each other.
Well, talking and listening. That's why I said. Enough of that going on in this country right now. But we really need to listen, and I think we have to create the forums, and I appreciate your help doing that, so we can listen and respond to the concerns.
Did Ms. Naylor, did you, uh, Ms. Perez, I'm sorry?
I was too, but go ahead, Ms. Maria. I know you wanted to talk first.
Thank you.
Ms. Perez, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, um, that conversation that um Denise already has to um describe is a conversation that is starting to gear up in the Latino community. I have placed some calls um specifically to understand the dynamic of not only the MOU, but having conversation with the community, like we did with the Brightwood Lincoln School. And those conversations I I just um had the other day with the superintendent about the concern that the community is bringing up because of the social injustice that's going on. I think it's more of coming to the community, presenting as a draft what we have for MOU, and then listening from the community and then doing the implementation. It doesn't necessarily means that we're going to change the MOU and cater to everyone, but at least have a conversation from Latino, and I'm expressing myself from the Latino community. Um, I know that in the past, that has been a concern, but I think that is the lack of sitting at the table um and discussing it as a community with a presentation of the draft of the MOU. And people understanding from the education point of view, why is those policies in place and why do we have to have it in place? And how we're gonna uh apply them? And if it's not working, coming back to the community. Um, I had um the uh about two days ago, um, City Council, Adam Gomez, um presented the concern to me. And speaking about the social injustice and equality that exists in now, I think this is a room for those conversations. And it's, again, is is a matter of reporting to the community um in having expectation that we're going to receive some kind of little, from the community perspective, some guidance is what I'm looking for, the word and terms. And also having at the end of the year, not so much, and this was the plan to be presented, and I don't know, but we could think about this. Um, from, I saw the data from 10 years ago. So we need to uh bring out a report, what is working? And in reality, have a conversation, what has not worked? And I think that's the forum that probably needs to be developed. But those are the concerns and issues that were presented from to me from the Latino population.
Thank you, Maria. Ms. Naylor, I know you had a.
I did. I did start. And so I I definitely echo the sentiments of Denise and Maria. I think that in addition to having the numbers is really stressing the fact that we really updated and differentiated the MOU as far as what is considered to be an arrestable offense, right? Because at 10 years ago, 12 years ago, kids were being arrested for disturbing the peace or what have you. That's not happening anymore. And so I think people are still thinking about a decade ago or when they've been traumatized, because maybe one of their kids or somebody they know have experienced a really negative, um, you know, had a really negative experience, and now they're continuing to think that is still happening, and that is the situation. And so to Maria's point, I think we have to have this conversation across the board and not just for the Latino community, for the Black community, for all of those that are in our city. Because I think everybody has their own perspective as far as this issue and what it what it really means. And and I think to Denise's point around the school-to-prison pipeline, a lot of times people feel that if they are not intentionally trying to do something to contribute, that it's not a thing. And the reality is, when you read read the books and you do the research and you look at the statistics, it is a real thing. And I think because we are definitely a more progressive school committee, and we are definitely, I believe, a a bunch of people who really love our kids and really want what's best for our kids and our community, I think it's very important that we continue to have that transparency with folks. And so when we sit down with folks and when we have dialogue, because I think dialogue is extremely important. I don't like being invited to a a meeting where people are going to bash us and not give us an opportunity to explain and converse uh with why we come up with these different policies or why we we've done the different things that we've done. But also to better understand why they feel the way that they do and what types of experiences they even counter. Because to your point, uh Superintendent, a lot of kids and families say that they have wonderful rapport with our s- our school resource officers. Even my own children have good rapport with their school resource officers. So I think to make the assumption that because some people have had bad experiences, that everyone is having those experiences is really not not fair to those families who really want to still see the resource officers in those schools to protect their kids. And knowing that the egregious acts are the reasons why people are being arrested, if somebody's bringing a weapon or if somebody's doing something that is is going to harm another student or an educator. And and I agree, God rest his soul, I don't want to see another Minister Brown situation. I don't want to see another educator be murdered because they're trying to break up a fight or do something that they're not trained to do. They're trained to, they're there to teach. They're not there to be a police officer or a security officer. They are there to teach. And so there are models that people will refer to and say we should implement, but we have to be very careful in anything that we do as a district. We have 26,000 kids, 62 schools, 61 schools. And so it's not, we're not a smart community with two schools that can just say, no, this is what we're gonna do. We have to be very careful with whatever we do, and we want the community to know that we are listening and we are willing to have dialogue and we are willing to make decisions that are best for everyone and not just certain populations of people.
Uh, if I, Barbara, were you gonna say something?
No.
Okay. I, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think that the the last thing that I will also say is is that um, you know, when we make a decision, we're making a decision because we think that it's the best one. And if it happens to be the wrong one, then we should be willing to change it. But, you know, the decisions that we're making around training and, you know, trying to ensure that SROs have all the training that they that they need and that teachers and staff have what they need. The bottom line is is that we can provide all those things. But if someone morally is not moved or changed by all that training and they still um abuse their power, we don't have any control over that. And all we can do is to try and give them the tools that they need or that they can use to be successful, but that there are going to be those bad apples. Um, and and we can't necessarily lump them all into that group. But what's incumbent upon us is to make sure that if and when it happens, that we are transparent and that we take swift action.
But we we do have, we'd be uh uh much more control over that. If somebody, he or she, does get out of line, um, we do have direct control over that, that besides what has to happen, that individual has to be vacate that school, that position.
There's there's a lot of misinformation in all sectors of our community about what is the MOU and what is in it. So the more conversations where it can be explained, here it is, folks, this is what it is, the better. I mean, it's 10,000 times better than it was about six years ago. And it it wasn't an easy fight with them to get to where we are. Um, and it's gonna be better in the future, because we're gonna learn more. Um.
But but it gave us more controls and 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 Denise, you put it well. You can provide as much training as you want, but when it's clear regardless of the training, an officer's not a fit, we have to take action, and we have to do it expeditiously. And um we have the teeth in that contract now to do that. And uh when when I've called, we've removed people, the next day they're gone, and the mayor's been supportive of that. Uh, we just can't tolerate it.
Yeah.
It's not okay, and if it's not a fit, we have to, we have to have them removed. We also provided a lot of training for our own staff on the proper use of the SRO. And that makes a difference too. They're only supposed to be used for what the officer is for, not for disciplinary matters in the school. So when, before that law changed, we were actually doing training on that, because that's very, very important. And it's it's interesting, the the only two schools we've had a problem with that are are our empowerment schools, and the staff didn't always go to all of those trainings. So those trainings make a difference too, because we weren't always using the school resource officers the right way. And depending on them for the wrong thing led to some problems. So we're gonna continue that training for for our staff as well, but be vigilant that when we need to make a move, we need to make a move expeditiously. And uh we we can't tolerate the kind of behavior that we should not be tolerating and our kids shouldn't be uh experiencing. So um we we will do that. We have the power in the MOU to do that. And uh, and again, I think the school committee for insisting on all those changes over the years and really helping me push for those changes, because it's a much better situation than it was years ago. We've learned a lot over the years, and we need to keep learning and keep improving.
Latonia, I wanted to say, uh, thank you for making the comment about, you know, uh, being bashed. None of us mind constructive criticism.
Right.
I don't mind it at all. And I and I don't mind venting, because sometimes you you gotta vent and then do all that walk in their shoes, walk in somebody else's shoes, I gotta. But I appreciate you saying that, because at times, some of the meetings have been, it's just a, you you can't even get your point across, it's been a straight back with some, not all. And I think uh it's gotta be, it's gotta be construct, it's gotta be constructive. And and, you know, we're not looking at the adversaries here. No matter what you say or do, what you've done with with some, it 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 doesn't matter. It doesn't matter at all. I think that goes to some misinformation uh that is is out there. So I'm glad you brought up constructive criticism, emotional, you know, venting. Thank you. You care. I don't mind that at all, but it it's that sometimes it gets to a point where it just becomes, it's it's not constructive at all on itself.
Right.
And we also, we 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 can't lose that, just like with many of our children, the best food and sometimes the only food they get is in school, and those are their soundest hours of the day. There's a huge number of our kids where the only positive interaction that they've ever had with a police officer is in school. And I don't want us to lose that either. I want kids to have have a chance to have positive interaction with the with good officers.
Well, you know, that was interesting. I asked my secondary principals what they thought to get input and what were the strengths and weaknesses of the program. The number one strength, I thought they were gonna identify as safety. They said relationship building. Those officers are establishing positive relationships with a lot of the kids. And you mentioned that that earlier, Latonia, but that was what the principals thought was the number one piece. Of course, they were conscious of the safety piece, but that positive relationship building, which is so important for the future of the city. So that's a big piece.
But thank you, Ms. Hurst, for bringing that up. I I know when the suit was made, I didn't want to get into it, but it's something that uh uh has to be the the community form or get let know, get our information out, listen. And uh, as you said, Ms. Hurst and Ms. Naylor, that somebody might have had a bad experience, but that doesn't mean everybody has had a bad experience on it. So it continues to evolve. Any any other questions or comments on the superintendent's report?
I have one thing I wanted to comment. It's getting late. I can't believe. We've been having longer meetings since we've been virtual than we did when we were at the building.
Lot more work, I'll tell you that.
Lot more work. This is good though. This is the stuff. I feel like we're accomplishing a lot. So um I just did want, I wanted to piggyback and say, um, you know, kudos to our schools and really kudos to our administrative team. I have had so many parents reach out to me. One called me a couple of days ago practically in tears, just so thankful that even though we knew that we would have to have the virtual graduations, that we were able to allow schools to figure out how to do something more personal for their students. And they were just like, wow, you know, it really meant a lot to know that they were heard and that that their kid, their kids are, you know, they're their concern, but they're also our concern. And that we really wanted to make sure that it was special for them. So I wanted to say thank you. And then on behalf as as a parent myself, I have two kids that were stepping up this year, and they were nervous about having something. And so they were excited to have their moment of fame in the parade and stuff like that and be able to be recognized. And so we we know that we couldn't do what we normally did, but it just really felt good to be able to show that appreciation and and that recognition to our our scholars. And and so, yeah, I wanted to say that to you. Thank you. And and if I may, um, I know that earlier in the agenda, we congratulated Valerie. She also told me to make sure that I mentioned Rachel Boudreaux, who was her partner.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. He also graduated from Central Class of 2020, and she um did a spectacular job as well. So I just wanted to mention her name for those who are listening as well.
The letter went, the letter went to both of them. Okay. Any other questions or comments pertaining to the superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none. Hearing none. Unfinished business? Okay, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Ms. Mayor? Ms. Mayor? Yeah. I have a question um regarding um Roberta Hannah. So will they be updating the guidelines determining the valedictorian and the salutatorian, Superintendent?
So, uh, good question, Barb. Uh, we we have a team looking at those guidelines. They've been updated twice, uh, 2009, 2014. And we do, we did talk to Roberta and her family. And uh we agreed for a team under Dr. Johnson to look at that policy again. But the last time we looked at it, 2014, the entire team, and the team was all made up of high school staff, recommended the four-year um piece in the policy, because too many kids were transferring into the system and winning that. So that was a recommendation of staff that was in the current policy. But Yolanda did agree to have a a look at the policy and see if there's something we should be updating. So she's gonna convene a team on that.
All right. Once that's completed, is, can we get a copy of that, please?
Sure.
Will that come before a a a subcommittee if it gets changed?
Typically, it had just been an administrative function in the past, but if folks want to bring it forward to a subcommittee, certainly.
There's no reason why it couldn't go before a subcommittee as a report item.
Sure.
Can I ask a, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Um, and I don't know if I'm incorrect about this, but is there, there is no standard GPA or the way that we weigh GPAs across the state, correct? Like, every district weighs them differently?
I I think there's a lot of similarities. We're consistent in all of our schools, and we're very consistent in how we then calculate those into salutatory and valedictorian. But there may be some different uh school systems that have little different grading systems, so calculate GPAs a little differently. But we're very consistent in all of our schools, so we're calculating them all the same way.
I guess I ask that question because I understand the disappointment that this young woman and her family um felt. I I really do. But I I did have to think about it from from the the big picture. Because if there isn't a standard way in which all districts weigh GPA, my fear is is that, you know, if a district, if a if a student transfers in from another city or town who weighs an A+ at a 4.2 and we only weigh it at a 4.0, then it's gonna knock one of our, the student that's been with us, out. So I guess I just wonder, you know, how do we determine that? Because it's gonna vary. Like, if, for example, I'm just playing devil's advocate, if Roberta had been with us for all four years, and then we got somebody who transferred in and knocked her out because their high school weighted things differently, you know, we're always gonna be changing the policy.
Right. Or had different course requirements. And that was happening, you know, when we went to Mass or we had a more rigorous course selection. So the course requirements come into it too, and some kids will transfer in from other states. And it was happening a lot, and it was knocking our kids out. And that's why Dr. Johnson and the team recommended. And that's why Dr. Johnson and the team recommended the four-year piece to it. So they've been through similar course requirements all of our high schools, four years in all of our high schools. So they can transfer from one of our schools to another, not from out of the district. So there's absolute consistency. Not to say it's perfect, because we met with Roberta, we met with the family. She was a worthy candidate, just like the person who won it was. But, you know, we have a consistent.
Ivy League school, that's fantastic.
Framework that we go by and we're consistent in all of our schools. But that was a major complaint from our schools when Dr. Johnson put this present framework together and we started implementing it. And it's still, you know, a thought process a lot of folks have. But like everything, we're always happy to take another look at it and see if there's a way to improve it. But that consistency is a big piece, Denise, you're right.
Not all districts, honors course doesn't look the same in all districts. And the weight that they gave it in the GPA is not the same in all districts. AP is more standard, obviously. But honors, people taking honors in one district might be just a regular class in another district. So there's very, lots of differences.
And that was the main reason we went to that four-year requirement as a team. But again, like Barb said, it's worth taking another look at.
Oh, I agree. I agree, it's definitely worth taking a look at. I guess I'm just wondering like how, you know, how do we, how do we get some level of.
Clear.
Consistency outside of.
What did you do with the dead chipmunk?
Four years. Peter, Peter's having a conversation, he hasn't chimed in all night. Anyway, that would be good to hear. Because I understand Barbara, but I also worry about like, so what happens when the student, you know? Right, I see your point as well.
Yeah. And that was, that was the point Dr. Johnson made. So we'll take a look at it.
Right, thank you.
But like I say, a policy, what was put in place was well thought out by the team at the time. And we met with Roberta Hannah, we met with her family, we had a conversation. We actually, because of her extraordinary accomplishments, offered her an opportunity to speak at the graduation and get recommended, you know, recognized for her tremendous GPA. So we did everything we could because there are always going to be some people on each, either side of the guidelines and they're all doing a great job. And there's only one Val and there's only one Sal in every class. You know, it always creates some hard feelings. A lot of districts, quite frankly, and I'm not saying I'm for this, but a lot of them have eliminated valedictorian and salutatorian for that very reason. Not saying I'm for it, but because of these kind of issues, they've eliminated it because it's created so much controversy, you know, so. But we're going to take a good look at it and we'll come back to it with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I just, I need to, I would not go without saying, Chestnut Middle School, Chestnut Academy, I attended their graduation and kudos to the staff. I mean, it was amazing, kudo to them. I mean, I was the flower girl, I was giving out the flowers to the students.
Is that kind of like always a bridesmaid?
That was very good, Maria, that was very good.
Kudos to Chestnut, okay, they did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Any other unfinished business? A new business, Peter Murphy, we want to know what happened to the chipmunk. That's what we want to know.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I got, because of Corona, I've been working on the garden and the chipmunks are killing me.
You stole the show.
This is a big year for chipmunks.
Sorry about that. I've been listening to everything you've been saying.
It's about gardening and proper chipmunk disposal.
So we have a very, but a very productive meeting and a very, a good, good meeting. But anything else on new business?
Plus the kids where the children are in charge of the chipmunk issue, Mayor, just, you know.
So there just, there needs to be a roll call vote?
We'll take a roll call vote.
Okay.
So we, is there?
We haven't even had a motion yet.
Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll move.
You look like you're falling asleep at turn twelve.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Collins, is there a second, even from the chipmunk, is there a second?
Second.
Alvin?
Second.
Second for Attorney Murphy. Will Madam Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. First?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, word is sufficient, go. Listen, everybody, Happy Father's Day, have a great, safe.
Happy Father's Day.
Summer and we'll see you soon and we'll give you an update on the chipmunk too. God bless you all.